I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, announcements, we have a special meeting this afternoon at 1:00 and another one on Monday at 9:00 here at the meeting and the next regularly scheduled meeting will be on January 8th. If you have not yet turned off your cell phones, now is the time. Please silence your phones. Moving into the agenda, the first item is the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
It's okay, sir.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Any public comment? Seeing none, Chrissy, call the question.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
Yes. Then we move into the action agenda and the first item is the discussion of roads and drainage project update for fiscal year 2020-2021 and I believe Drew is going to lead us through this.
Good morning, everyone. This year again, we're doing a fairly large drainage and road project. I'd like to start out with the roads, if that's all right with everyone.
Good.
We have a budget of approximately $350,000 to do road improvements and paving and sorry about that. This year, we're looking to continue some of the areas that we didn't have budget for last year to finish up areas and we're also looking at areas that needed the most work. The biggest areas around that needed work were Cortez and, believe it or not, Balboa out back, which I know we don't focus a lot out in the back, but I don't know if any of y'all driven back there recently and there's a lot of potholes and it's just, it gets, it gets out of hand for the maintenance crews to go out there because there's just so many popping up.
I'm frankly glad we're addressing that this year.
Yes, yes, we're going to, we're going to shoot to do the southern side of Balboa, so Sunning Lake Boulevard, all the way to Granada. Also, Florida Avenue has a section, we're going to try to aim to pave all of it if we have money, but there's a section of Florida Avenue that's worse than the rest of it that's, it's deteriorating pretty bad. I don't know if any of y'all been out there, it's, some of it kind of started with a house that never went up, they started breaking up the side and it got worse from there. The other areas that we're looking at doing, Alcantara, Spumoni, Bobadilla, that's in Unit 13, Nita, Tagus and Soprano, those are areas that've got micro paving and they're, it's past 10 years on all the micro surface and that's his extended, or expected life, so they're, they're showing cracks and signs of deterioration, so it's time to pave those again. The other thing we're looking at doing is intersection repairs. We've had a number of areas inside of the preserve area that's, they've gotten potholes and the district was going to come in and, I guess, repair them, but I don't know what the, I guess we never got a paver to come out and patch them, but we're going to come in and, we're going to overlay the whole intersection and patch the holes in the road. We're also looking at inside of 16 on Deer. There's, San Lorenzo is one of the bigger ones and a lot of it's garbage truck traffic and the new construction, it's just tearing up the inside radius of the road and it's just, the whole intersection's starting to get bad. So we're looking at that and if we have money to do more, we'll, we'll add on more. If we come in under budget, we'll try to add more and George has also mentioned he'd like to do some thermoplastic striping. A lot of the stop bars are getting worn down to the point, we, we do paint them probably a couple of times a year, but the, the regular paint that they use on the road doesn't last as long as thermoplast, so the county has a continuing contract with a couple, a number of paint, or painting companies, they do thermoplastic and regular road paving for the whole county that, it's already, we can piggyback off the contract, they already put it out to bid, they have three vendors we can pick from and we'd like to use that if that's, if that works out logistically and if it's okay to use their contract still. And that, that sums up most of the, the roads projects. Does anyone have any questions about what we're doing or any comments?
Do you have questions for people that are?
We will, but board first.
Sure, I'll ask a question.
Okay.
So, we've allocated $350,000, right, for this?
Correct.
So, looking at the years that you've also detached here, my question is, is that the right number? What do we have to rethink what we're doing and maybe increase it?
You mean increased budget on what we're doing for paving?
Well, I'm looking at what you're recommending over the next five years too and it looks, it's pretty substantial. So, is, I guess my question, and you don't have to answer it today, but we have to certainly address this, is $350,000 the right number to put aside for roads every year? Or do we need to rethink it and have a different number?
Looking at the roads that we have coming up in the next few years, there would probably only be a few of them that I would say would be, that are in like bad shape that we'd need to address. Our roads, in the next couple of years, our roads are going to be in decent shape. I'm not going to say we need to stop paving because there's a lot of this is preventive maintenance too, because if you let your road get too deteriorated, it's going to cost more to bring it back up to standard. So, in a couple of years, I feel we're going to be getting more into a maintenance road paving situation than a, than more of a, okay, we got a road that's falling apart like Balboa or Cortez. We're, our roads aren't in terrible shape. We have some cracking, but we don't have a lot of our, our structural integrity of the roads are in pretty good shape once we get past these few. So I think we're on a good course. Now, we might adjust that in the next couple of years if we see, if the roads start getting in bad shape quicker than we expect, but we're not, we're not in the area that we're like, the roads are in terrible shape and, now, I can't say that for everything out back where there's no houses, but that's not, I don't want to say we need to focus on roads that we have no homes on, no utilities on, but I think we're, I think we're in good shape with the money that we're spending now, but if prices go up, like construction material costs, that's going to be a different, different ballgame too. So if we start seeing inflation over the next couple of years, that's something we might need to look at, but I think we're on good course for the amount of work we're getting done every year. I don't want to, I don't want to say we need a lot more money, but we might increase it as time goes on with inflation.
So I'm going to take that, the 350 is an okay number for the time there?
I believe so, yeah.
Thank you.
Shan, Ignatius, or all those in the middle, you know, with all the trucks and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sure you know a lot more than I do, but we won't be fixing them for a while, will we, because of just all the construction? There is a couple intersections that are, are bad, but there's no sense fixing them with all those trucks.
Yeah, I think we're just going to focus on some of the intersections. We're not going to pave all the roads until they get settled down a little bit because they're, they're moving at a pretty good pace, building houses in there.
Yeah, and there's a, a couple intersections that the trucks cut the corner and it's all busted down. I'm, I'm sure you've seen it.
Yeah, some of those, some of those are going to widen, we're going to increase their radius from 25 to 35 or more if we can make it fit.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, a couple we've already, we've already fixed. Well, the In the Woods and Irons, we already.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
Is there any, are we looking at improving the cul-de-sacs? I'm talking specifically on Pebble Beach Drive, on both sides, they're too small.
Yes, the, the issue with that is, we would do it sooner than later, but the issue with that is we don't have, we don't have property to increase them. Right now, they, they go from right away to right away and really, they need to be almost double in size to be up to date. In that particular location, we actually have, which I don't know the status or how, how quick we can get them, but the county has two lots between Pebble Beach, is it San Bruno?
I'm thinking of that.
Okay, we're, we're working on getting them.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, on that particular case, we're going to try to loop it, get the two lots next to it and just loop it into San Bruno so you can actually get out of there. Ideally, if we could do that through all of them, at least connect each one so you're not dead end, that would be the best.
Do you know why Pebble Beach Drive was not completed all the way around?
I think, I think it was to do with drainage permitting and it probably related to money, but I don't know if that was done back in the mid 80s when they were doing all that development and design. I don't officially know why they didn't connect it. I do know there was a wetland just north of it that was nearby, I don't know if they were.
A what?
A wetland. I don't know if they were avoiding it and just decided to stop, but, yeah, Mike brought up, no, they could have been, they weren't, they didn't own the land to develop it, if it was out of that group.
But Drew, we had that, I think, correct me, Tanya, if, if I'm wrong, but they, we got the wetland issue taken care of, it's a, it could be done now, but it's a.
Correct, correct.
And our quote was, to any developer, it's $20,000 a lot extra.
Yeah.
That they have to pay to develop it and the ones that own 38 of the lots turn that down.
Correct, correct.
So, it, it can be, Craig, it can be done if we get somebody that wants to spend the money.
I guess I have, just, I don't discuss the worries. I can't see a charge on the contract.
Well, it's been about, what, three or four years ago, the develop, the property owners along that, the section where the road is, was never constructed, they approached the district on putting together some cost estimates of what it would cost to construct the road there. So we did that and we presented that to the 38 property owners and they, they denied that.
The property owner, we had to pay $20,000.
I don't recall that it was $20,000.
I'd say it was 18.
It was 18, okay.
It was right around 20.
Something in that range, but they, they were not interested.
And the reason why not, they, they have a million and a half dollars in the 38 lots, I think, and are ready and that's was their reason to, they, they thought it was too much.
Okay. All right, if everyone is done asking questions about roads, I can move on to drainage.
I have one question that's kind of a minor point, but it's one I've had a few times and you brought up striping. It seems to me that on many of our intersections, we've got the stop line painted too far from the intersection. So for instance, when I'm going out northbound on Nadina and hit Darnell, I'm back so far that I can't see around the curves of Darnell when I'm at that stop sign, so I have to then inch forward and it would make sense to me to have the stop lines closer to the intersection. Is there a, a law point on how far back from the crossroad the stop line has to be?
I don't, I don't know that it's a law, but it's a general like engineering practice that it's 25 to 35 feet back from the actual intersection, the crossroad that you're coming into. So you might, you might be experiencing some of that. I think, I think it's the intent to make sure you stop well before the, the travel lane so your front end's not sticking out because some people don't see as good as others.
Yeah, no, I, I see that, I just, 25, 30 feet back seems a bit much to me.
Yeah.
Particularly on intersections with curves.
I, I agree with you, but I, I think it's just one of those, it was a standard practice to do and that's why, that's why you see that mostly everywhere. It's not in every case, because I know sometimes you have a crosswalk that's right up against the opposing lane and those are usually six feet to seven feet wide and then your stop bar's right next to it, so that's closer to 10 feet. So they could be moved if it's a, if it's a trouble area, so if that's something.
I, I think we should look at the situation and, and be sure that where we're telling the people to stop, they've got a ability to see cross traffic.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll go over drainage. For this year, we're, we've got a budget of $200,000 that was approved. We're, we're doing some continuation of last year because I know we kind of got, we, our budget kind of got clipped a little bit last year due to the COVID. I think y'all approved to reduce it, just to limit to what our estimate was for that year, so we cut out a few jobs that we were going to either change order or put out to bid later. In Unit 4, the rear lot ditches, mostly near the commercial properties like Buffalo C, they've got, it's just more of a maintenance thing, they've got a lot of vegetation growing up in them and the district doesn't have good equipment to go in and clean it, so that's something that we normally put out to bid or get a contractor to help us with. So it would be ditch maintenance at the bottom, getting the vegetation out. We've done other jobs like this in different areas, like in the golf course and the south of Orduna. We also have in Unit 4, which these are not prioritized right now, this, I'm just going through the list as it's shown on my report. We're, we're looking at Terega Street again this year. We've had a number of resident complaints that want us to look at it again. The front lots are, I don't know if y'all have seen the pictures, I'm, I'm sure a lot of you've seen the older reports, but almost every season, as soon as it rains, there's six to nine inches of water in the driveways and ditches and sometimes the road even floods. Yeah, the report, the report has pictures, if you have a copy of it with you. I, I put some pictures more recently of all the sediment that's built up in there and I have historical flooding pictures also in it. That's the sediment there that's in the, that's currently sits in the driveways after it dries out and then farther below is the pictures of the actual flooding. Our, to keep costs as low as we can, our proposal, which it was part of one of the options before, back in, was it 2010? I don't know what year their older, older report came through, it might have been 15, was to install sock pipe down the front, down the front on each side of the road. This year, to keep the budget from getting crazy, we're proposing to do the north side of Terega along the front. We'll put a sock pipe, just like we did on Sunrise, to help drain out the area. It'll keep the water table in check and it'll, whenever it rains, it'll help it perk out and run to the pond that we constructed closer to Frontage Road. We are looking at other options right now. The initial proposal was to soft cut the driveways, install the pipe and repair them. We are looking at alternatives about connecting a larger pipe down the back lots and connect it down the, between the homes. We just have to verify if that'll work, if we have grade fall enough to make that work so it'll drain out. That would be slightly better, only because we don't have to impact all the homeowners with driveway repairs, but we're, we're still looking into that. We'd like to, if we can, we'd like to do something this year, if we get budget monies to do so. The next area in Unit 11, which is, it's quite a ways out back, probably don't drive out there very often, but they have, there's a lot of road damage and we also have culverts, two culverts that are sinking. We need to pave the road because it's so bad. We're doing a short stretch of the, of the road, we're not doing the whole thing, just to hit all the damaged areas. The garbage trucks are tearing it up really bad, there's, there's areas that the whole lane is busted up road, there's not even asphalt in it anymore, but in order to do that, we'd like to go ahead and fix the pipes that are crossing the road so we don't have to come back in and cut it open later after we pave. That's the main, main purpose of that. Unit 13, Manor Drive, it's a smaller job, it's just some ditch maintenance. Over the years, I don't know if it's silted in or if it just wasn't, wasn't ever caught to begin with, but the water just sits in a number of the driveways there and we're just going to dig out the ditch so it allows the water to go into the ditch instead of sit in the driveway and have the homeowner have issues. Also in Unit 13, Tagus Street, almost every rainy season, every storm, water goes to the inside corner and puddles up and runs over the road. It's been, we've been trying to do it for a number of years, but we just, we keep pushing it off and hopefully we'll have money and ability to do it this year. If we're going to install a culvert that just crosses the road to allow the water to drain out of that corner. Also in Unit 13, at the intersections of Alcantara and Nita and Bobadilla and Nita, we've, we've kind of kept an eye on these, but we haven't looked at them in a couple of years, but we want to pave these roads as part of the paving project. When I went out to go look just to verify a few things, there's, they're getting the potholes in the road and it's because the inside of the culvert's rotted out and it's rusted and it's on basically all the road that came through. We'd like to replace those before we pave them, just so we're not, again, not cutting the road back open to, after we pave the road. Unit 16, the back lot ditch, it's a main drainage ditch between Mexican Hat and Sunning Lake Boulevard. This is again, maintenance, it's just heavy vegetation overgrowth. We did downstream past Cortez, but we never got to between Cortez and the pond, so we're able to mow the other sides, but this will also clear out enough so we can do some more of our own maintenance in the future. It's just going to knock down the vegetation on either side of this rail and dig out the bottom of this rail. Unit 18 is the next one. Oh, excuse me, I, excuse me, I skipped Pebble Beach Drive West. It's a continual drainage area and George asked me to make sure we tried to get this on the list this year. This is probably weeks after the last rain, these pictures, the water's still standing there. We're not 100% sure on the scope of work, but we're pretty sure we can do some ditch cleaning to alleviate a lot of it and we might have to, we might have to install a culvert, depending on where we can get the grades, the grades to end up at. The old plans show the water draining north from this area, but it looks like we might have a low area in the intersection or the, the bend there near the fourplex that was put in on the south side of Pebble Beach. Our intent is to mainly stick with ditch cleaning and if we need to, we need to install a culvert, we'll, we'll look into that and we'll verify that before we, we put it out to bid and everything. Next one, Unit 18, we had this on last year's list, but the road didn't have any serious issues yet and we didn't have budget monies to do so because we got tightened up, but this year, I, I went out to check it again and we're starting to get some potholes forming in the road and this is a main boulevard, so we don't want to ignore it. So there's two steel culverts that are rusted out on the bottom and we're essentially just replacing them with new concrete culverts and replacing the, and there's two inlets on either side, we're going to remove the inlets because they're, someone hit them there, I don't know if you've seen some of them around here, they're elevated inlet, they sit about six inches to eight inches above the travel lane and I don't know at what time, I don't know if a mower got it or someone ran off the road a little bit because they're only right at the back of curb and they're a hazard too, so we're going to remove those and the plan is to replace them with a flume instead of putting an inlet back in place because it's, we don't, there's no need to put an inlet because we have the head wall on either side, we can just flume right around it. And that pretty much wraps up our intended projects for this year for drainage.
What about the south end of Pebble Beach Drive West, down there with the, there are several duplexes, all these new houses going up, that has been extremely wet all year and it doesn't seem to be draining very well.
Correct, that's, that's what I mentioned right before the.
That said, Mexican Hat one?
Well, it's, it's between Mexican Hat, I mentioned it right before Cortez, I believe. That's what we're going to try to do.
Oh, I missed it, sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're going to try to do some cleaning as much as we can and if we need to install a culvert, we'll, we'll put one in. We just need to get some topo of the area to verify where we can, where we can send everything.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So the, the key question on this is you're showing a budget of about $200,000 and expense estimate of about $260,000. So the question is, if I'm reading that correctly, the question is, do we have a source for that Tanya, Omar, do we have a source for the extra $60,000 that we need for the drainage work that's being recommended?
Not immediately, I mean, we could pull that from reserves if we need to.
Any other questions from the board?
I'm not so sure we explained everything correctly, but that's okay.
What do you mean?
Well, are we not going to, on the, on the Terega, is there not going to be a possible charge for the residents? Are we going to talk about that or just one side?
Well, we got a couple of plans that we can put on that.
Huh? No, I'm saying, but just to let, how are we going to notify them of what's going on?
Well, depending which way we go, Drew and I have both, and Georgia both talked about this, how we're going to do it. If we go in the front of, of the property, it's going to be a little different cost than if we go to back, go with the sock pipe, then it will be a cost for the residents. A few years ago, and probably more than a few years ago, but they come up with a cost of somewhere around $8,000 per home. Well, obviously, you know, the people weren't going to do it. Drew and I have been talking a lot about this, we've been there a lot and Ray, you've been through that property also and I'm sure a bunch of the other guys have too, but we feel if we put a sock pipe down the front, cut the driveways, it will be a cost to the residents somewhere between $1,000 and $1,200 per resident. But we have to send letters out to everybody to let them know what the cost will be, what planning of doing and decide how many people want in to have it done. We know there's probably half right now, but there are also homeowners that, that rent their, rent those homes and, and we don't really know, you know, what their thought is because they'll have to pay the bill. So that's where we are with.
The renters or the owners?
No, 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 the owners. Yeah, so, we've done the same sock, sock on Edgewater and a few other areas and it's worked out. It, it's really worked.
No, no, I understand that, I was just wondering when we were going to tell them.
Well, that's, we were, we were going to get to that, but I'm glad you brought it up because I know there's some people in the audience right now that question it. That was our next, you know, but I knew you'd get to that, Ray, so we're, but.
I jump ahead all the time.
Yes, you do, but that's okay, Ray. But right now, we did go out and get a few prices from a contractor, from a couple contractors to, to do the work, but we just have to decide which, which route we're going. Are we going to put the drainage in the back or are we going to put the sock pipe in the front, front? And then it will cost each resident, just like, just like we've done on Edgewater and a few other streets, that the cost of cutting the driveways was, 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 the cost went to the residents. And I was talking to Omar a couple of days ago about this and he said that everybody did pay their bills, you know, everybody paid, you know, you know, it's a headache for him, you know.
The other thing is, you're saying it's 50 or 55,000, whatever it is to do that. If they're each going to cough up 1,200 bucks, that number's coming down too. So the amount of money that we.
Right.
That we would actually need is not, is less than what it was showing.
Okay, that's kind of what I was trying to get at is how we're covering this deficit.
Wait a minute, I get, wait, what?
When will, when do you think we'll be able to tell them which way we think we ought to go?
Next meeting.
Next week?
Yes, the next, the next meeting we have.
Oh, next, oh, next January 8th.
Okay, January 8th.
Well, we were going to send out letters based on.
We have to send letters out to everyone first. I mean, that's got to be done like, you know, the office, but.
We need to get good estimates from some contractors so we understand what the cost would be.
We have two estimates and they're pretty close to the same. If we go, go to the front and cut the driveways. Now, Drew?
Well, we are working on it and, I mean, you've seen the pictures and I mean, I'm sure all you guys have been through there and, and this has been going on for six or seven years and, and we should finally address it, absolutely, and, you know, you know, to put this to sleep.
And yet, the other thing we should keep in mind, it's not just Terega that's a problem. There's, there's, got to remember the street spelled with a B.
Boston.
Boston's horrible.
Right.
Just horrible. First and probably Terega. And there's a couple of other areas back there that eventually we need to address for the, I mean, for Sunning Lake Center. So when we do, again, doing budgets going forward, we got to keep this kind of stuff in mind. in mind.
Absolutely. Okay.
So I guess for my clarity, we're estimating what we think the cost is. We don't even know yet whether we're going to go to the front or the back of the yards, so who's going to make that determination? Is that from the outside contractors or Drew, are you doing more engineering work or?
Some of that's going to be determined on whether or not that we can, the residents would be willing to pay a portion of it. It's my understanding if we don't get okay to all affected residents that we're going to be cutting their driveways if they don't want to pay to replace them, then it goes into a whole nother process about special assessments and then that's, that's a whole nother long process that might potentially kick it out of this year's project. That's why we were looking at the option B of going to the back. That would run another sock pipe along the back and then work its way in between. I don't know yet if it's going to be every other home or every home to then tee off and then actually grab the water problem up front. So it would be more pipe, but it would be less driveway cutting. The good thing is sock pipe's cheap, it just depends on where the labor comes into. So it might be a wash between the two. Ideally, it would probably work a little better if we could saw cut every driveway, but the other way is an option and it can, it will function.
Okay, so we're going to send out letters to the homeowners and then based on that response, we'll decide what direction we're going to go?
Correct. That's, that's the big, big decision issue right now, is that...
How many homeowners are there? On one, on one side, it's 21 and...
It's 21 homes and we'd only be crossing 20, 20 driveways, so technically all 20 would, would need to do...
More than...
Yeah, but we will be, we do have plans to continue this. We just didn't want to impact our entire budget because we could probably blow our budget and more money if we would address this whole area at once. I'm not saying we don't need to, but...
Well, we have to start and I think, I mean, you know, the people that lived there, I was over there and the woman was actually, had to back her car up to get her mail and then come back in the driveway. And it was there with the construction when it started.
You're talking about their whole area?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it clearly was not designed properly. But I can't, I can't speak to everything on that because I wasn't around and I don't know all the story, but it's, it's very evident of the issues, what's going on.
I can, all I can say is I was on the board and we had several meetings and we, I think again, Tanya, that we, we said we'd pay a substantial amount, but there was a substantial amount that we wouldn't cover because we don't cover it for anybody else with, with the misdesign and it wasn't Sunning Lake's doing at all. This is the builder and the whole thing was a mess, but, and they eventually turned it down. And they didn't really come back to say you got to pay for it because I think they understood, but, so I'm still willing to work with the homeowners there, but for such a mess that's over there, during the hurricane over there, I don't know, you guys should have seen that. We had people getting in a car just to get out of their driveway, just to move a car so they could walk, walk the street. So it was, it's certainly a problem, but it comes down to cost and how much they want to help. And that's where I think they're coming, because they formed quite a committee if I remember right and...
They did, in 2016, we had a special board meeting and the, the ultimate option, the cost, the one that was going to cost the most, of course, and the foolproof was installing culverts along there.
Yeah, yeah.
And that was, that was the most expensive option, but that was the option that would alleviate what we see there on the screen.
But it just shows you what a bad, or not management, but a bad contractor would do. And Sunning Lake was not at fault at all. The county was probably more involved than, than making the mistake that we live with, but I'm willing to help as much as we possibly can. It's not way out of whack, but, because I was then, I mean, and so was the board, but it just come to the point that we're not going to fix everybody's yard for 20,000 each or something like that for something we had nothing to do with, so. But again, it's up to this board, what we do and what we want to spend per property, but I'm certainly willing to help.
Okay, any other board comments, questions? Open it up to the public, any public comments? Come forward to the mic and tell us who you are.
Good morning, I'm, I'm Mark Caramana. I live on Myrtle Beach Drive and I appreciate the opportunity to come here to speak. A couple of questions, two fold actually for you. The construction, I live on Myrtle Beach, the construction that traffic that's going on there now is just ridiculous. And they're speeding down through there, why aren't they being held accountable for the damage to the roads? And why are they allowed to speed down through there? Is there some sort of speed bump or something that can be put on Myrtle Beach to prevent the, the construction traffic from going through so fast?
We have a, we have met with the contractors and talked to them about their subcontractors. They have fixed some damage, they haven't fixed everything that they're supposed to, but they have fixed some. We've talked to the subcontractors, you know, to tell them to slow down, but we all want to know when you get subcontractors and, I mean, we've had trouble with loud music in the middle of the night. We've had, we've had, you know, you know, the speeders, we've had, you know, parking where they wanted to. We have talked to them, I know Omar's been involved in that a lot too. And, and security has actually went and talked to a couple of truck drivers, oh yeah, we understand and they, hopefully they stop.
They continue doing it.
I know, but there's, I mean, I don't know how many homes we, you know, are building over there now and I think we're always going to get it. I mean, we could maybe put a temporary speed bump to slow them down.
That would be wonderful.
That could be a good idea, I mean, that would have to be, Tanya, we'll have to let me know, do that. We could put a temporary one to slow them down. I mean, that's a good idea.
And as far as the construction damage to the roads, I mean, you know, we're putting a bill for that?
No, we're not putting a bill.
So the, so the damage on final inspections, we go back and we assess any road damage that occurred, that gets charged to the contractor in order for us to file a release. We keep those funds until the construction's completed so we can go back and repave and fix, fix the road damage, but we're not going to fix it while they're still in the process of building.
You mentioned like woods and irons at the end there, did we return that or were the builders responsible for that?
That was less of a, that was less of a damage affair, that was more of a improvement to the grades in the road and so much running out.
Yeah, they're running out and getting on the neighbors' yards is what they're doing.
Right.
That was just more of an improvement, so it's, the trouble is too, if you don't know, which I know if you sat out and watched all of the front of the ditch, but it could be the yard trucks, it could be the contractors, you don't know who did it.
I can tell you who's doing it, I've been watching what's doing and that's possibly the thing with the, with the big sand trucks.
Yeah, and I've actually talked to them, I've called the owner, you know, and he's even talked to the guys and stuff and I understand, I mean, you know, but they're also big trucks and they're trying to, you know, you know, they're trying to get their jobs done too. They're all, you know, and to make money, so.
Okay.
But we have been addressing it, Mike, just so you know that.
The speed bump would be a big thing, Mike.
Okay, let me talk to Tanya, Tanya and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Good morning, Bill Norcross, resident. I just wanted to kind of explain what we know as the public out there about drainage, probably very little, but I tell you what, every, it seems like every year this area, which is really, it shouldn't have been built on, that, in that Miranda area, I've been over there and after rains that it's, it's really bad. From what I understand, that homeowners were asked to pay $2,000 to have underneath their driveway so the water would bypass and wouldn't flood, and they refused to do it. They spent $192,000 at the end of that area for a drain off area pond. It's a sad situation down there, I don't know how it could be remedied, but it seems to come up every year and we want to spend more and more money down there and it's, it's terrible when we have heavy rains. So as far as that Miranda area, I question the whole thing down there.
Hi, I'm Debbie Buckingham and I live on Terega Street and I appreciate the opportunity for this to be brought forward again. I know we had, we met back in 2016 with a big issue and at that time, the residents were going to be asked to pay $10,300 each to try to remedy that. So this looks like a little bit better mitigation process perhaps. We, we've had rain and just nine inches of water in our driveway pretty much all summer and I know it's been an excessive rain, rainy year. We've had a sump pump, my husband bought a sump pump that's been pumping pretty much steady, which has had a reflection on our light bill, of course. And the only time it has been dry since June has been last week. We had like five days where it was finally no water, but there is a, there is a constant running of water from our lawn across our driveway and many times we couldn't even get to get our mail without getting, putting both cars across. So he has the sump pump, it's been draining to the back swale pretty much steady, so I don't know which process is going to be the best for us. We're willing to pay the $1,000 or $1,200, whatever it is, to have the driveway fixed. I don't know what kind of response you're going to get from everybody else, but we're all dealing with this terrible water situation on the street. So I'm hoping it can be remedied and sooner. We've had fish in the water, we've had birds out there eating, it's awful, it's a, it's a health hazard and it's a safety hazard because if children get in there, they can drown. So I appreciate your efforts, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, back to the board. Any further comments? I think what you're looking for is just kind of a consensus that this is where we're going to go, this is a discussion item, so there's not an action. But I, I think, I think it's good that we're addressing these issues and, you know, it'd be nice if there was an unlimited amount of money and we could solve all the problems of the world, but I think we're, we're making a good effort to invest several hundred thousand dollars a year in the roads and the drainage and I think that's a positive thing. And so I appreciate the advanced planning you're doing on it and I think from my perspective, you've got a good plan here.
I support it too and it's stuff that we need to do for our members, for our residents. It's just, for them to be quitting up with it for this long, I think is so bad on us. It's not right.
I think that takes care of that item. The next is discussion item B, Ponce de Leon Boulevard Speed Limit Change. And I'll, I'll take the lead here because I was caught off guard when I was coming home and saw a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign and I'm going, did somebody go down to the Army Navy store and put up a speed limit sign? And then I saw more speed limit signs, so I called Tanya to find out what happened and how that speed limit got changed and it was apparently a staff decision on recommendation of the, of the staff team. And I said, well, let's bring it up for discussion because I would think speed limit changes, she said there hasn't been a speed limit change since she's been here, so this was kind of the first for her. So I said, let's bring it to the board because I would think speed limit changes are, one, something that the board should act on, not staff, and two, in my opinion, that area of Ponce de Leon from the, from the north entrance in is an area where 30 miles an hour is really a reasonable speed. There's not that many homes on it and as our consultant said a year ago, the roads will kind of define what the speed would be and, and to my thinking, and I'm, I'm one who likes to follow the speed limits, 25 just seems like an unreasonably slow speed for that mile and a half stretch of road. So I brought it up for discussion.
Do you want to take the lead on this?
Sure.
Okay. At, at the meeting on Ponce, when, when a request came in for the speed bump, Drew and I went out there, Drew thought it was too short of an area to put a speed bump, so we looked at the, the speed that was on there. There were 30, but there were also, there was a 30, a 25, 30, it was kind of mixed up. So, so, so when we all met and, and we were by the school, according to, the school was also 30. We've had a lot of complaints by the school with speeding. We've also got, we also have three or four house, three or four new houses on there that have sent letters to us saying, saying that the speeding is, is, they were concerned about their kids there walking to school, we've got a lot more kids walking to school. So what we did is, because we've got the speed bumps, we dropped it to 25. Is it going to help? I don't know. But I felt, George felt, that for the safety of the people, we were dropping, instead of putting speed bumps every other month, we were going to drop the speed down to see if we could get there. The Sheriff's Department have, has also set speed, speed traps there in the past and they're going away with 30.
There's no question about...
That's why we moved it.
But lowering, lowering the speed limit isn't going to change that because the road calls for a higher speed. I mean, I, I go 30 and I've been passed...
But it's thickly settled. What does, thickly settled is 25 miles an hour.
I'm sorry?
Thickly settled.
But, but there's less than 50?
I've got it right here. Matter of fact, I've got another petition.
But, okay, but how do you define thickly settled in California, which I'm more, but I'm more familiar with California law that if it's 17 driveways in a mile is residential and we don't have 17 miles, or 17 driveways in that mile. And, and as far as the school goes, I don't disagree that if you wanted to make it 25 by the church and the school, that would make sense, but where you've got the signs, you come off Sunning Lake and there's not a 25 mile an hour speed limit sign until you're past the school and when you come off Nadina, there's no 25 minute sign, 25 mile an hour limit sign between Nadina and Sunning Lake. So, so people don't know that it's 25 until you're past the school.
No, we put 25 mile an hour.
The 25 mile an hour speed limit sign is past the school if you're going north and if you're coming from Nadina, there is no speed limit sign between Nadina and Sunning Lake.
We said right in the meeting, we were going to drop the speed limit on Ponce. So Ponce starts from there to past the school, past those three new houses.
Okay, but people don't know it, that's what I'm saying.
25 miles an hour, no way.
Where does, where, it doesn't say, it doesn't say 25 miles an hour until you're past the school, Mike.
So, so what you're saying is we should be moved to sign closer to the school?
Well, I'm, I'm saying if there's a section of that road where 25 miles is right, it's by the emergency entrance to the hospital, the church and the school.
Right.
Between Nadina and Sunning Lake and, and there's nothing, if you're going south from Nadina to Sunning Lake, there's nothing that tells you it's a 25 mile an hour speed limit. And if you're going from Sunning Lake, you're past the hospital before you know that there's a 25 mile an hour speed limit on Ponce.
I think, Neil, I think we put six, six signs.
Yeah, but they're all north.
Yeah, well, they're not all going to put them down here too, so.
Okay, I drive that road every day.
Listen, you want me to put it back to 30, that's fine. I'm just, you know, I mean...
Well, my, my, my question to the board and that's why I asked her for a discussion is number one, when we change a speed limit, which apparently we don't do very often because in Tanya's tenure, it hasn't happened until now, should those speed limit changes come to the board, my opinion would be yes. And then my opinion on Ponce would be 30 miles is the right speed limit for Ponce, we just need to make sure that they're not going 35 and 40.
That's fine, yeah.
And slowing, putting a speed limit sign that says 25 on a road that looks like you should be going 30 or 35, isn't going to slow them down.
Well...
Because there, there aren't that...
Those three new homes, Neil, just so you know, the reason why we looked at it, actually those three new homes, we had, I guess there's two, two young families living in there and if you, obviously you go by there a lot and you've seen that little slow children sign, okay?
Yeah, I've seen it, yeah.
Right, that's what kind of pushes to try to slow it down a little more, you know, okay? I mean, hey...
But if slowing it down to 30...
I mean, if you want us to bring it to the board... I mean, if you want us to bring it to the board, I'm fine with that, you know? But it's also our responsibility for the safety of everybody in this room to try to do the best we can. And we thought, since we're starting on Ponce here, going all the way down to the end, why not just go 25 all the way down?
And I'm giving you my opinion on why.
I apologize if you, you know, you didn't know, but I did say in the meeting that we were going to drop the speed limit on Ponce, so.
What meeting?
Yeah, I don't recall.
In the meeting, when we talked about Ponce and stuff, we said we're going to drop the speed limit.
So you're talking two months ago.
Yeah. But, you know, that's fine. So from now on, any speed limit that we drop, we should bring it to the board. And that's fine.
That would be my opinion.
Okay.
But I haven't heard.
I'm okay with that.
At this point, it's just one opinion. I haven't heard from anybody else on the board. So I brought it to the board for discussion.
You know, I'm okay with that. That's fine. I mean.
You guys done?
I would love to get some more comment from the board.
Well, first of all, sending out a piece of paper that's saying we lowered the speed limit on Ponce without saying where or why is pretty dumb. Like I'm supposed to guess where we did this? I'm just telling you. So the information that was supplied to at least myself tells me nothing, except that we did something. I happen to agree with them. If we're going to say we're responsible for putting speed bumps out, then we should be responsible of putting speed signs out and what they said. But I'm still not sure what's going on with you guys. Why you did this, I have no clue. We, I know you try, everybody's trying to make it better. Everybody's got their right intentions. I understand that. But you've got to come to the board and say, here's what we're thinking of doing, here's how we're going to do it.
That's fine. I'll take the hit on this. I did it.
It's not a question to take.
Okay? No. I did it because I thought it was safer for everyone. I had residents coming to me and saying that they were concerned about the speed. And I'm telling you, I'm out in the streets all the time. And I know that if we put it at 30, they're doing 40 and 50. And we all know that. You know, I mean, we put the speed signs, so, you know, with that maybe it would help.
Have you measured the speed since you put the signs up? Has it slowed down?
Not since we have, because we've got the speed sign in a couple of different areas. As a matter of fact, we just took it off of Sunrise and, you know, we got a petition. They want to put a couple more in there too. And I just got that this morning. So I can't nearly know about this yet.
Yeah, Ponce is really kind of a main boulevard. So 25, to me, doesn't make sense there.
So getting back to where, let me just finish my last point, is I have no clue where you put these in. So if you wanted me to make a decision, somebody better supply me with the information. You'd like to make that decision.
Okay, understood, yeah. Okay.
Since we decide.
Use your mic.
We're not going to have a speed limit.
Use your mic.
Should be deciding also what the speed limit is. Because I don't agree with 25 mile an hour all the way out to 27 on Ponce de Leon. Out in that area, it's silly to have a 25 mile an hour zone. So I think we should have discussed this. Fire to me, gentlemen.
All right, that's fine.
Mike?
I agree too. I mean, and I don't, you know, some people would say that'd be a micromanage thing. It really isn't. It's, I know you, Mike, I know you're trying to do the best. But it's the same way with every department we have. We have the same problems sometimes. You might be, you might be aware of this, that we have some kinds of problems with the Casper Golf or Indigo and doing stuff. But it's not, it's not about, they, they think.
I understand.
Everybody's trying to do the best they can. But there's, I know when we get a complaint, who gets it?
Yeah, I know. I know my, it's like cutting a tree that they were with.
Yeah.
All right.
So it's not your intent.
I made the decision, it was, you know, and I actually just did it because, but we had the signs, signs in stock already and stuff, so we just put them up and tried to do it. But now you just got to let me know, do we keep the 25 up till past the school and then change it back to 30? And that's, you know, is that what we want to do?
I want to see something in writing, what you did and what you recommended.
Okay.
Then I can decide.
Okay, all right.
Joe, any comment?
You can make a speed limit any you want, but if you don't force it, it doesn't matter. So all you've really done is probably increased the percentage of speeders.
Pretty much.
They're all going the same speed they were when it said 30.
Yeah, pretty much.
Any public comment on this item?
Hello. Good morning, everybody. Robert Ed, the one that puts the petition in for the speed bump, do you remember? What's the speed limit on Granada?
30.
30.
Okay. They have at least two to three speed bumps there. So I recall on Ponce de Leon, they have one speed bump.
Two speed tables.
Speed?
Two speed tables.
Tables on Granada?
No, on Ponce. We have two speed tables on Ponce.
Speed tables, okay. What's the advantage? What's the reason, the main reason you want to keep the speed limit on 30 on Ponce de Leon?
Because it's a main boulevard that leads to residential areas where it's 25.
It is a residential area. It doesn't lead to one.
No, no. Ponce is a main boulevard. There are residents on Ponce, but it's not a residential area.
I disagree with your interpretation.
I believe they're defined as feeder roads. Granada, Ponce, La Cortez, that's where your 30 mile an hour speed limits are.
So if you keep it at 30, is that what you're saying? You're going to keep it at 30?
That would be my preference, yes.
And to keep the traffic flowing quicker and smoother, is that the reason?
The concept would be, yes. It allows it to run quicker and smoother and the road, again, we had a consultant come in and talk to us about the roads, and the roads really define the speed. And if you try to put a speed on a road that's slower than the road calls for, you're just going to have more speeders. You're not going to really control traffic. There are other ways to control traffic. So that's why the speed tables.
Tables.
Right.
All right. Closer to my house, there wasn't enough room to put a speed table?
Well, not on the curve.
Well, mine's two houses away from the curve.
I understand, but they have slowed down for the curve already.
No, I mean, going toward the hospital.
I understand. But they're, well, they come around the curve and then they increase their speed, ideally to 30 miles an hour or no more.
All right. Do we do things best? I'll just pray that nobody hits my mailbox again. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, so I guess to close off the discussion, do you want to leave things the way they are until they come back to us with a report or change it back to 30 until they come back with a report?
I prefer to leave them as they are until I hear something.
I agree. It's not a duplicate to work. Until we know how.
Okay, bring back a report for the next time. And it wouldn't hurt to get the speed sign out there to find out if you're seeing any difference.
Okay, yeah.
And Mike, I would like, where this gentleman lives, I went over there and saw it and from the, I think it's a stop sign, not the speed bump, but it might be, I can't quite remember.
Yeah.
But I understand how people, once coming south, going south here at the end, that once they get by that stop sign or that speed bump, to get to that corner, to, I can see where people were speeding. Now, I don't have the answer, but it's kind of wide open once you, once you get over that speed bump or that stop sign, Drew, it's a, it's a hellbent a letter to get to the intersection.
We're talking about the last bend on Ponce South.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. The distance between the two is not conducive to speeding. I'm not saying people don't speed.
That's right.
We do have data on it and there was, it was like 2% or 3% were going like over 35 miles an hour on the data, which isn't a lot, but I know we still have it. That doesn't say that's not there. It's just that, my recommendation when they ask me is it's just, it's only like 750 feet between the three-way stop and the bend, which generally is too close to put something in the middle. I'm not saying you can't, I just, it's not recommended to, but it's not saying we can't.
Well, I'd just like you guys every once in a while to check it because I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But I also, when I drive it, can understand the people that are in a hurry to get out of Sun and Lake, they have a good opportunity, they've got a 750 feet opportunity to go quite fast.
Correct.
And I don't have the answer, but I just, would you like you to check it? And if the speeding gets over 50%, let us know.
Okay.
Because again, that's something that, I understand, it's not real long, but it's an opportunity for people in that area to just try to get to work and they're late or whatever. Because I've been like Neil, I bet people have passed people in that 750 feet.
I don't doubt it. Those people drive around, I don't.
Well, I go down Sun and Lake and if I'm piddling like an old man like I am, I mean, I have moms with kids because they're a little late to get to school, going around, passing me on Sun and Lake Boulevard. So, but again, that's, we're just trying to keep everybody safe. And if it costs a little more, you might sometimes have to do it. Just keep watching it.
It brings us to discussion item C, operational survey action updates. Who's going to take the lead on that one? Tanya?
We have a few updates from the last meeting on August 28th on the departmental action plans for recreation and golf and food and beverage operations. So Mike, if you want to take the lead on that, just kind of briefly, if there's any questions, I don't necessarily want to go through each line item, but if there's any questions that you have based on the updated information, Mike will be glad to answer those. And Ariel?
Okay. Anybody from the board have any questions? Are you good with the update?
No.
Okay. The question, what Tanya was suggesting is rather than going through each item, if you have any questions, let's address those.
Well, I've got a couple of questions, like on the landscaping on the facility here. It said that the maintenance was completed back in July, but I know we've allocated money to work on it in this year's budget, like put irrigation in, et cetera, et cetera. I'm just wondering, what are we planning to do with that?
Tanya and I have been talking about the landscaping around the community center. I believe this is referencing within the pool. I know Mike's guys did some really serious work on the landscaping in the pool back in July, and I think that's what's referenced on here. There were wasps nests and they cleaned out the palm trees and did a lot of that there. We do have money in this year's budget for landscaping that we can definitely spend around the community center.
We still plan to do the irrigate and fix that?
Yes.
And make it look halfway decent?
Yeah.
And that's going to be done when?
This year. I'm not telling you when, because I don't know when, but it's going to be done this year. You know, we plan, we also plan on putting more, the butcher's been here for a lot of years.
It's going to be done in the next two weeks?
No.
I mean, we.
Mike, can you use your microphone?
Fiscal year.
The fiscal year, we'll get it done. Okay?
Fiscal.
Correct.
Between now and September 30th.
Oh, yes, yes. Can you write that down in your notes so you'll remember?
I think it's a joke. You think it's funny? I think it's a joke.
It's not. We said we're going to do it. We didn't have money before.
Don't you go, don't you have to plan it out? Or you think on Tuesday, you're going to say, let's start tomorrow?
We did. We've been planning it.
So when is it going to happen?
We just said that.
So when is it going to happen?
We have a lot of projects going on, so we try to do stuff in-house and save money, right? And if we don't, we hire, you know, there are a couple of companies that will come in.
Probably spring. Good guess.
Okay, August.
August.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me ask you this. It says that we're going to, we pressure wash the pool deck and prepare surface for sealing later in the year.
Correct.
When is later in the year going to be?
So the sealant has to go on when they're, like during a dry season. So they did a deep pressure wash on the deck. It's like a, I don't want to call it a clear coat, but it's a deck sealant that goes over the top. The problem is, is that you have to do it when you know, quote unquote, know there's not going to be rain because the rain is obviously going to.
Wash it up.
Wash it up.
So how are you going to know?
So what month is that going to be?
I would say, what's probably a safer guess, like February?
Well, usually we do the work on the pool towards after July because there's less people.
But that's when it's raining. So it would probably be like this winter, I would imagine.
I mean, it's tough to.
That's right. January, February would be my estimate.
But we have to close down.
Don't get frustrated with this, Mike, because all we're doing is saying that if there are these things that need to get done.
Yes.
And you're going to do them during the year.
Yes.
Put together a maintenance schedule so you know and we know when this thing is going to happen, particularly if you've got a situation where you're going to have to put the sealant on during a dry season. Figure out when that dry season might be that will work best and get it in schedule.
Right. And there's some coping work we have to do around the pool, you know, some smaller maintenance stuff that we have to do.
My estimate with the sealant would probably be January or February. I think that's going to be our best bet as far as quote unquote guaranteeing that we can do it and it be dry. The other nice part about that is it's typically a little cooler. So the pool, as long as it's, if it's under 60 degrees, the pool's closed. So we're more likely to hit one of those days.
But is there a temperature issue with when you apply the sealant?
Not to the best of my knowledge, no. The only thing that we were made aware of was no rain.
Okay. So.
Can I, is it, the flyer with playtime, playtimes available in the recreation office, is that, can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, absolutely. I believe Kelly's got hard copies right over there as well.
I mean, you know, we might as well go through these because you guys took the time to put them on paper, right? That's all I got for Ariel.
Well, depending on what you're defining as area, one of the things that jumped out at me was in the courts. The court is not well maintained. There are lights that are busted out, not being replaced. The court paint is faded and needs to be repainted. The windbreaker needs to be fixed and the court needs to be cleaned. And the improvement is maintenance replace the outlights.
So the, all of the wind screens have been replaced as of, I believe it was even before October. Last year, we were able to do the tennis courts and this year, we completed the pickleball courts. So the entire facility has new wind screens. Maintenance did replace the outlights. And actually Drew, was it this year or last year? Anyway, sometime relatively recently walked the courts because we, yeah, about the resurfacing, there had been comments that it was cracked and needed to be resurfaced. So we asked Drew to come out and take a look and upon their review, it's not in need of resurfacing at this time.
Okay. And that would be my point, is we can say that we replaced the wind screens, sunscreens, and that the.
Court's been evaluated and doesn't need to be replaced. But that should be in the improvement plan rather than just ignoring the complaint. Well, and some of these, I apologize, some of these, if they were addressed somewhere in there, I didn't put it on every single line just to try and keep it from being super super redundant, so I apologize, I'm happy to make changes to that.
Okay.
How long have the courts been left?
Um, I, I don't have a crystal ball, and I don't know what product, what, what type of product was put down, like if it had a warranty or estimated life. It depends on what, what material it was, but a lot of the damage was on the perimeter, closer to the perimeter, and the small pitting that they saw, I guess we used an asphalt surface for when we, when we resurfaced all of them, and it's the aggregate, like you see out in the road, just the heat cycles, they caused the surface aggregate to just, I guess it's pressure pushed it, and it just pops out, so you have a little tiny pits in certain areas of, of the surface. A lot of that's going to be dependent on if it, if it starts buckling or anything causing trip hazards in the actual play area. I, I don't know exactly how long that, that surface is going to last for. We might have to go back.
Is it possible in the pickleball area or the tennis courts a bit?
It's, the cracking, the perimeter cracking is in both. It's more the tennis courts. I saw more of the, the pitting in the pickleball area, of the little, little tiny, we're talking quarter inch maximum size rocks that have popped out. It's something we probably want to check once or twice a year, just to make sure it's not getting worse. Right, at, at the time I inspected it, it didn't look terrible, but if it's, if we've got an underlying issue, like the asphalt surface or the play area is getting thin, like the surface is getting thin, that's something we might need to look into sooner. I don't know if it's just repainting or recoding it or resurfacing it, but it might be good to look up the original documentation when we purchased or acquired the surface, and try to see if they have a, a warranty. Usually warranties are going to give you your expected life, if they're going to warranty it for five years, it's usually going to be dead at the end of the five years, just for preference, but.
We had to do those courts twice, right?
Yeah, that was, there was, I guess, a number of issues. I just, I, I wasn't involved, but I saw some of the back and forth emails. It was a little bit of a nightmare.
Okay, well, Tanya, why don't you lead the effort to dig out what work has been done by who, what warranties there are, and work on getting a maintenance plan put together for ongoing maintenance of the courts, so that we can get it scheduled like we do the roads and drainage and other things. It's obviously more, a little more minor than the roads and drainage, but still should have a maintenance plan.
Understood.
My, my only comment is, it's important to have a plan, just because of the way things work around Florida, period. I mean, I, I can remember not too long ago, when this board authorized the, the redoing of the entrance of, to the clubhouse. It's, what a beautiful thing, but how long it took. By the time we got around to start doing it, we found out we had to wait six months for a concrete person, and, and even over to driving range, so it's, I just think it's, it's not just you.
Right.
It's, it's advantageous to have, to at least start looking into it, because what I see us doing is, okay, we're going to do it, and then we get, because my God, the, the job that was done on the front of that entrance is, what a total disgrace.
Yeah.
But it was frustrating to us on the board to authorize it, and then almost take over a year to get to the final thing, and that's, and that's all in planning. And I, I'm not blaming anybody, but it's just, it'd be nice to know if you want to do something, Mike, in October or September, that you can make sure you get, you can get it done then. And that's all, it's, again, that's something that everybody's trying to do, but I, I visited a facility a couple of days ago in Fort Myers. It was a Truun-run company, and they're doing a $6.5 million upgrade of their kitchen and, and their clubhouse, and it's going to be done in February. They did not plan to have that thing done in, in the middle of season, whether it's COVID or not, but it's, it's again, backups from people that are doing it, and, you know, and Mike probably knows that, probably is anybody else, that's, you get into something and it's delayed, and I don't know if that's from a lack of planning, or that's just the way it's got to be, but sometimes it's, you've got to look for things that are not going to go right, and, and it seems like here, everything is delayed, and takes longer, and, and I don't know if that's anybody's fault or not, but it's, the planning part is, is a big thing, but I don't know if you can do anything about it, okay?
We had a saying, saying in the company I used to work for, that if you fail to plan, you plan to fail.
Yeah.
Okay, continuing on, you were doing a good job leading us through here, Ray. I said Ray was doing a good job of leading us through here. You got more comments here?
You want to go to the kitchen part?
That's the next one.
Yeah. There's a couple of things on the kitchen, I, I know, I should know this, but the soup and half sandwich is on the menu, right?
That is correct.
Huh?
Yes.
I thought it was, I just wanted to be sure. The other thing is, on your page two, I guess you've changed your mind on heated plates, or heated plates, metal plate covers, et cetera, buying some more. I just, it says not recommended all of a sudden at this time?
Yeah, so that was an option when we originally went through this, but at that time, we were recommending to put in extra heat lamps in our window, and plus some more retractable heat lamps, and the metal plate covers would obviously be a pretty good expense, but after we installed the heat lamps and the retractable heat lamps, we feel that at this time, it's, it's sufficient enough. That is something that you would see more in the hotel business, where you're running food from a kitchen to a banquet room that's a really good ways away, and, and I don't know if it's, it's just not recommended that we do that at this time. I, I feel currently that the, that we've addressed the situation, and by our comment cards, I got a stack about that big on my desk, that situation has not come up maybe one time in the whole entire.
So you feel you need to walk the.
I, I feel the situation has been addressed.
This last thing that you got listed there about, you have different types of china, you've been saying that now for six months, but I don't know what your plans are, if you have any plans.
Yeah, right, right now, we're, obviously, we've all been in a restaurant and hear a plate hit the floor and break. It happens, so currently, right now, we are just maintaining our inventory of china. It'll, we're kind of going to put a shock to you, but at some point, we're going to need to replace our china, and that expense is probably in the amount of $25,000. I know that's kind of a shocking amount, but that is something that we will have to plan for, you know, what to get it under the five-year capital plan, you know, this year, next year, going out, I think would probably be ideal. But that is, that was put on this action plan, just to be the forefront of that idea. It's not an emergency at this time, but it is something that we need to do six years in the future, maybe.
Is this the original stuff from 10 years ago, when we reopened this?
I can't say that for 100%. I would, I would be guessing if I said that that china was from when they did the original clubhouse build.
Well, if it's need, that we need to address, I would think we should, should be in touch.
Correct. Like I said, I, I think it's, it's, in the long term, we need to have it in the back of our minds, I think it's something that, you know, when we go through the budget process next year, would probably be a good time to put that in the five-year capital on, on the fifth year line. I think that is, you know, I think that's efficient enough. Like I said, we're not in any emergency situation at this time. I, I think if we put it out, if we look about five or six years out, is probably a good timeline to replace our china.
Is it because the china that we're using, we can't replenish as it breaks, so we're, or, or we're choosing not to, because we're using a less expensive option?
We, we are using a less expensive option than the originals, and if you actually sit down and look at them, they, they don't all match. So, in that situation, is that an emergency? I don't feel, I, I don't feel that that's an emergency to replace the whole thing, because we have some mismatched china.
Right, but I, I guess my point is that if, if the reason that we're going to have to eventually replace all our china is because we're not going to have enough matching, then maybe going the route of buying less expensive china that doesn't match to replace the breakage, in the long run, may not be cost effective if we're going to have to end up having to replace everything.
Right, so in the option, so in the event that we need to maintain our current china, we are replacing with a less expensive option. Now, I'm more concerned, not necessarily of the mismatch, I'm more concerned of, of the wear and the lifespan of the china. So, as, you know, over a 10-year, 12-year span, you know, how many times has that plate been through the dishwasher? How many times has it been stacked on other plates? How many times has it forked? You know, they wear out over time, so that's more the guideline that I'm using for replacement, not necessarily the mismatch from replacing breakage. Does that make sense?
Correct, but if you're, if you are replacing the china as it breaks, then you're going to have this cycle of old china and new china, and you're going to constantly be replacing, so you may not have to do a complete repurchase unless you're trying to change the, the overall decor. So if you're, if you're trying to get a full set of matching, then that's when you would buy a full set, but as long as you can buy the replacements, if you're replacing in-kind, it should kind of cycle through. Some of it's going to get older, but it'll still match, and when it gets so old you can't use it anymore, then you replace it as if it broke.
Yeah, no, I, I'm following you there, and that's, you know, when we put that on the plan, we'll be evaluating that at that time, yeah.
Well, let's just say we'll put it in the budget for next year, how's that? Which is where I think it should be. I mean, you know, we spent, we've spent God knows how much money in that place.
I, I agree. That's definitely something we could do to replace it.
Well, if we're in the budget.
I, but I, we'll put it in the capital plan, but it'll be, I don't, that's, that's, that would be my recommendation, yes.
Let me ask you a question, well, for service, I know your service has gotten a little bit better.
Amen.
But I, I do have a question on this informed wait staff, on daily specials and continue to pray out daily specials. Do these, do your waitresses, waiters actually walk around with a piece of paper, drop it over the table and say, let me tell you what our specials are today, they are blah, 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 read it off a piece of paper? Because I don't think that's happening.
So, we, we put our specials on a, on a menu that gets delivered to the table with the regular main menu. I know that is a topic that has come up with, you know, it's, and it's a pet peeve on my thing of being super knowledgeable, is a term that I use with my staff, to knowing the specials and maybe having in their notebook where they would not have to get, they, they need to know that, that, that knowledge is something that is on my plan to continue to increase.
You're saying it's hard.
I'm sorry?
This is not real hard.
No, it's not real hard, I, I definitely agree.
If you've got four waitresses or waiters, you print off the specials four times, give them each one of them, and says, every time you go to a table, you read it off.
No, I understand that, and I, and I feel that that situation has, has gotten down to a minimum, and again, you know, my comment cards reflect that. To say that situation doesn't happen, I would, I can't say that, it does happen, but super knowledgeable is, is something that I use as a term when I talk to my staff, and that is something that I will always continue to address, and I feel like we've addressed that situation fairly well, and we will continue to do so in the future. That's, and that's earmarked as daily.
The next one. The next one? The bar training? You've got issues there.
Yeah, so, yeah, we've had that discussion of, of overpouring of our liquor drinks. We had, we have implemented this, and we do do this, and like the discussion I had with you, I, I believe this issue may be just our stock, a stock pour issue, so maybe we're just, we have listed that this is how much liquor we're putting in our drinks, and we're, and we're doing that, and that may be too much, so. I have gone back and I have spoke with my staff yesterday to reevaluate that, and maybe we just need to decrease the, the stock pour that we would do, or what we would, this is the pour that we do, whether it's one ounce, an ounce and a half, two ounce, we want to make sure that they can consistently hit that pour, but is the pour that we are recommend, that we are saying that we're pouring, that may be too much. You know, maybe, I, I want to say it's an ounce and a half for, I mean, it's a little bit different for certain things, but for a regular rum and coke, if you will, I believe it's an ounce and a half, if I, if I'm correct, but, you know, other, other things could be different.
Have any cards that say that the drink was not strong?
I don't recall any of those comment cards that say that, and I find, I mean, but, I mean, there could be a reason for that, yes.
The ones that I, I don't drink necessarily much, very often, but some of them that I see, I mean, the mix is negligible. Well, you get the water supervisor's special.
But yes, I will continue to, to monitor that.
Okay. I'm going to turn the page a bit. On the, on that one, Jessica and Kelly's page, I guess. That first, the first statement, encouraging informed residents to join our email list button located on the SNL district website through social media and verbally, that's going to be done weekly. My only question is how? How you often do that? You've been doing it apparently, because it's, it's on the list, so, according to the way I've read this, you've been doing it, but I'd like to know how you've been doing it.
I'm sorry, that, that one's on my page, and, and.
It's on the residence.
It is, but it's on my report that I issued to you guys, listed with Jessica and Kelly, so that one may need to have follow-up with you, I'll have to reach out, because I haven't spoke to Kelly, and see if, if she is doing it. I don't know if you know anything, but that, that's on my report, and I would have to follow up on that.
Yeah, that's, okay. So, as far as like joining for our email blast, that's something. I'm sorry?
You guys wrote it, I don't.
I, no, I didn't realize that was my Kelly, I, this wasn't on mine. For email blast, we put that in, there's like a standing piece in the newsletter, I know, that says, sign up for our email blast. Definitely at every event, even, we had our Santa Paws event last night, and we made people aware, there was a few people that came and said, oh, we, we didn't know about this event, so we said, you know, give us your email address, let's, we'll put you on the list. People come into the district office and just inquire about it. I know it's in our new resource guides, it goes in the new resource packet. Occasionally, we'll put one on Facebook, we don't do that quite as much, because that obviously goes well outside of just Sunna Lake residents, so some of the information that's pushed out through email blast isn't necessarily pertinent to someone who doesn't live here, but occasionally, we'll do it on there, it's on the district's website, it's on the marketing website, just like an easy link where you can click it and sign up for email.
The last meeting, we were talking about the timeliness of the newsletter, you and Ray were going to have a meeting with Tanya and. It didn't go, okay. The timeliness of that newsletter, in my opinion, makes us look totally unprofessional. When you, I received the last newsletter, the Friday after Thanksgiving for what was going to happen in November through December. That's not acceptable.
We've, we've made those changes, Mr. Hirk. We've made some changes.
You're going to change the good time.
Yes, sir. The next newsletter contains nothing that has to do with the month of December, it's January only, so it's the December newsletter that'll be going out. The newsletters are created under the assumption that they are sent out by the 14th, we'll say 14th, 15th, or 16th each month, each month. If for some reason that is delayed at all, and then you have the post, you know, however long the post office gets, then yes, they do occasionally get there later, they are done and created.
Don't allow for it to come late. It makes us look unprofessional.
Understood, so in December, for this December newsletter that'll be going out, it's the December-January newsletter, there's no mention of, of December in there, it's upcoming events and January, the month of January events only.
Yeah, that, that kind of fixes it, because I had the same thing, I mean, we had just discussed it, and then I get the notice of the Thanksgiving buffet, and Thanksgiving's already here and gone, so. That was, I'm sure, I'm sure that was on your mind, because we had just discussed it, but if you're saying that the newsletter that we will get in late December is going to be talking about January, that's what we're trying to get to.
That is correct. We, we actually held off sending it, because I wanted to be able to put the results of some of our December events in there. So like our fundraiser event we had last night, the newsletter is not going to go off to print until today, because I wanted to be able to thank participants and, and give a report on how we did.
Terrific.
Okay, a couple of little things. Thanksgiving, you said we had $7,000 in food and beverage sales, right? I just wonder how that compared to last year?
Well, I, I actually have that for my later report, but we can talk about it now if you'd like.
I just wonder how it compared to last year?
So typically, you know, just in terms of people, this year, we served, we served 240 dine-in meals this year, and 120 takeout meals, so that's 360 meals, give or take one or two. Last year, we served, I think. Last year, we served, I think, 460 meals. So I think it was about 10K last year, and I think we were at about 7K this year. But we also reduced the menu a little bit this year because we wanted to restructure the size of our buffets, and we have our sneeze guards, which is in this report. We wanted to make sure that everything was safe, COVID-friendly with all that. So we had to reduce our menu, so we actually reduced the price. So our APR actually went down as well.
So we've got about 30%.
Correct.
I mean, I just wanted to know.
Correct. So it was about 25% less attendance and about 30% revenue due to those two factors, yes.
And breakfast with Santa. It says here we have 23 reservations as of December the 3rd. How are we doing now?
That's my.
That would be mine. I, I did not look at that this morning, so I do not have an update on that.
Do you think we have, are we limiting how many we do?
Uh, we have plenty of space. So, I mean, at 25% capacity, we could do near 100 people. So we have plenty of space to social distance that. The last time we did it was a couple of years ago, but I think we had 100 people, which was a great event. It's, it's not a ginormous revenue generator, but it's, it's, it's one area at the time that we actually focused to get more of a younger crowd in there, and, and it was well received last time. Last year, we didn't have the date available to do it, so that's why there was a year gap. And I suspect our numbers might be down slightly from a couple of years ago, but in the times that's probably given, so.
Okay, last, how's the New Year's Eve look?
So we just start, I mean, the New Year's Eve stuff, you know, started going out, and I have, actually, that's on my list to talk about as well. So we're going to do the New Year's Eve event, and we do have a few reservations coming in. That usually doesn't fill up for, you know, events usually start to fill up two weeks out, and then really start to fill up in the last five days. So basically, last year, or subsequent years for that matter, we've always had dinner, dancing, and the last few years, we've, we've done a balloon drop. Obviously, we don't want to put 200 people on the dance floor shoulder to shoulder with a balloon drop. So we eliminated the balloon drop. We actually eliminated the dancing. So we're going to do a nice dinner, have some dinner music, and we'll do a champagne toast with a countdown at nine o'clock, which is what we've been doing the last time. So we've just kind of cut out.
Price this year to last year?
It's probably, well, it's, it's, to be honest with you, the biggest thing with the price is the meal, so the price is probably the exact same.
I'm sorry?
The price point is probably exactly the same, I believe.
So we eliminated the dropping of the ball.
So the balloon.
Music.
Right.
And dodging the same.
Right. So the fee itself is, is for the dinner. All the other stuff is included. Now, if we eliminate the balloon drop, I mean, we still have some dinner music, but eliminating a balloon drop, we used to give away some stuff. We had, you know, free appetizers, 25% off. We probably had some $10, $25 gift cards that were in the balloons. Now, as I was going to tell you in, in my report, we can do that in a more socially distanced way. You know, we don't have to have a balloon drop to, to raffle off stuff, if you will, because that's basically what it is. You know, we're, we're going to come up, and I'm not going to tell you what it is because I have some fun ideas and I don't want to spoil it, so, but that doesn't mean we can't do the giveaways.
Okay. Just wondering. Going to the last.
Just as an opinion, and of course, I've always got one, but in regards to that meal, it's unfortunately to me, it's the same meal that you serve all the time. It's a filet, and it's the golden potatoes. He must have stock in these golden potatoes. I, I mean, it would seem like we ought to be able to offer a different cut of steak, a baked potato, which most people that have steaks or filets would like, in my mind, a baked potato. Now, I may be totally wet, but that's what I see every place else.
Right.
Not golden potatoes.
I, no, I.
And I, again, this is what you got, and it's the same, same.
Sure. And traditionally, that, I mean, and you're right, but traditionally, that when we serve the filet, it's the, you know, it's always the number one choice. It's usually 75%. And if it's a different, and you're right, it's not a different choice of, it's not a different choice of steak. You're correct. But in the essence of being, and I'm not saying that we can't do it, we could do other stuff, but in the essence of being efficient to what we do to try to achieve profitability, cross utilization is, is, is huge. So the filet is the steak that we serve on the normal menu. So if we order 200 steaks for an event and we only sell 150, those other 50, I don't have to pray, I can sell on a special. I can serve them off our normal menu. And again, I'm not saying that we can't change it up. It is possible. We can do it.
But you don't think that a different kind of steak would sell just as easily as a filet, if it's a good steak?
That is correct, but we do not have that, like I said, we can do that. We absolutely can do that, 100%. However, in trying to be as most efficient, that is where we can do. And the answer is yes, we can, there are outlets, we can do that. There are outlets to overcome those things, absolutely. I agree.
Could we have more choices than just a filet or a steak on the menu? I think other people would like something.
Are you referring to, are you referring to the main menu?
Yeah. Why not?
We've tried it. We've, we have had multiple steaks. We, we did it on the old menu last year. We had multiple steaks. We have, we've had flat iron steaks. We had, we have, we have had some other options. And, and believe me, there's reasons why we choose which ones we choose. It's because of suggestions that we get, which we get a lot of them. We get a lot of folks that say, hey, we want to have a cheaper steak on the menu than a $20 filet. So we put one out there, which would be a flat iron steak, and then we, we can't, we can't move it. We can't move it. So we could put a rib eye, we could put a rib eye steak on there.
Steaks, I don't, I don't talk about a flank steak. I'm talking about.
I understand.
Kimboons or rib eyes.
But, but we get, we, we get, we, we do get a large, we get a large range of suggestions when it comes to things like that. We're on both ends of the spectrum. We can't always be everything to everybody. No, I understand what you're saying, and the answer is yes, we, we can try that.
It's awesome, so, but. Okay.
Good.
That's it for the, the last part is the golf courses. The only comment I have on what you've given us there is on the last item, which pertains to the bunkers, bunker sand. Earl basically says, yeah, we have a problem, it does need to be replaced. We're going to work on developing and addressing all bunkers on both courses ongoing. Well, to me, that's saying, you're going to have to spend a lot of money if you want to fix them. So I assume we're going to put this into a budget request for next year on the capital.
If, that's, you're correct on that. So if, if we, if we want to look at replacing all of the bunkers all at once, that would 100% have to be a capital improvement project. In this scenario, basically what he's doing is he's, he's maintaining them, this goes back to the China thing, it's the same idea, finding the worst bunkers, replenishing those, and doing it at, operating at a lower cost, and just kind of gradually just maintaining our situation. But if, if we decide that it's a big issue, and, and I don't necessarily think we need to go tear up every bunker and replace it, but it, it certainly can be a discussion if we feel that, that it is going too slow.
These comments came from every, from the membership.
Correct.
Correct? Maybe just feels that there's a problem with the bunkers.
If we feel like we're falling too far behind on replenishing bunkers to where we need to put forth a capital improvement project, it will be on the list come next year. I absolutely agree with you.
But I think that's an unnecessary capital expense. I think that's an unnecessary capital expense. I think the bunkers can be maintained, cycled, and as long as they're, if we get into a situation where we have a desire to change the sand, we want to be sure that the bunkers are consistent across the course. And that would be when you could have a situation where you might have to replace all the bunkers at the same time. But as long as we can maintain the consistency of the sand in the bunkers, we just address them as they need.
Do we have a defined plan for the opportunities for summer 2021?
I believe in our last golf committee meeting, Earl had that report. He is planning on, obviously, this project is planned for next summer. So he is planning on getting back together with the, the ladies that were on this project, which was representations from, from various women's groups. They're going to meet again in January, go over the plans again, make sure they are happy with it, and then we're going to schedule it. And we're moving forward as if we're doing this project next summer. Obviously, we've kind of had a mutual agreement on the board to delay capital projects, but we're moving forward as if this project is going to continue to be on the plan. Otherwise, we'd be too far behind.
I got one last, just general comment on this whole report. I mean, I think we got to take these things seriously. If we take the time to send out a survey to the general public, and they take the time to respond, and we just, you can't just put it in the drawer and leave it and sit. So I mean, we have a survey on, that was just done on recreational amenities. I mean, we can't, just so we know, we can't let that just sit there and do nothing. Otherwise, the people out there are going to think, well, why bother? So I mean, I just think it's important that we respond back to the community, or that they're aware that we're at least looking at these things and taking action on them. And the last thing, which has nothing to do with this subject, is I will tell you how disappointed I am that the clubhouse looks like an everyday clubhouse. And I've brought this up for years. Our Christmas decorations, well, how shall I say? Non-existent? Or still non-existent? You would never know it's the holiday season in the clubhouse.
I, I, I'm a little confused on this one. I've had, I had somebody come in there absolutely praising about the decorations in the clubhouse. When was the last time you were in there?
I've been there for nine days, so maybe I should apologize.
That, I think you need to go back.
Do we have Christmas up?
Absolutely. You need to go check it out.
I apologize.
Yes.
I've been in this booth.
No, it's, which is why I was asked, yes, we, we did it right after Thanksgiving, which is, and a lot of it might have happened early last week.
Good. I'll have to take it back and say, good job.
Not, not yet. You, you'll, it's good.
Trust me, I'll see it today.
Any other comments? No? Anybody from public want to comment on the strategic plan?
Morning again. Bill Norcrest, resident. Very difficult hearing everybody back here, so we're trying to pick up on a couple of things. First of all, a good positive thing, I understand Thanksgiving dinner, I heard reports from several people, which is very nice, that they had an excellent time. And congratulations on that. I want to get ahead of the interviews this afternoon. You have two companies coming in.
Just to be clear, this is not general public comment yet. This is public comment on the strategic plan that we just discussed.
Exactly, exactly. What I would, I would like to have them, or you guys, ask the question about this new organization. Actually, it's not new, it's the, the new Citrus Golf, and how they feel about it. That's all related to what we're talking about today and plans and stuff like that. And how is that going to affect us? Apparently, that we're on the list for that.
We, we are the Citrus Golf Trail, Bill. It's, me, it's, it's, to be honest with you, me and Andy are probably the, the two most that head up the Citrus Golf Trail. We work alongside with the TDC and, and some of the other courses, but as far as participation and leading the buzz, we, we do that. So we are essentially the Citrus Golf Trail, and we are connected with a few other courses in the area. So it's not a separate organization that we're competing against because we, we are the Citrus Golf Trail.
Well, let's see, information I heard on the radio this morning about the Citrus Golf, and I, and I just didn't know of how involved we are, how, how it's projected, how it's going to increase our play, and that sort of thing like that, and when Trill and Brown come in, and the other company, Amandi, how they feel about it and how they can increase play. We understand that, and membership. So it's kind of important that we get ahead of that question, so when they come here, you can ask them, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment?
Again, Mark, Mark Caravano, resident here. I'd like to just voice my opinion. I, I think that our current management has done a wonderful job. I think that the, again, the Thanksgiving dinner that they provided, we attended, and we thought it was wonderful. I especially have to shout out that I enjoy the pro shop, people that work in the pro shop. Andy and his crew are doing a fantastic job, and I just wanted to voice my opinion on that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the next discussion item is the general manager job description, goals and objectives update.
The first item I have here in the packet is the job description. So if you see the yellow highlighted changes, I'll go ahead and read those. As part of the job description oversees the preparation and administration of the annual budget approved by the Board of Supervisors, annual audit, financial reporting, and capital projects with the Finance Director. And the second change from the last meeting, or the last time we discussed this, is in addition to responsible for communications to residents, golf members, and other recreation members. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I have. When did this, this strategic plan become, I guess I'm confused. I went back and looked, it was November of 2018, and we passed it through a consent injector to adopt this plan, which means that probably none of us read it.
I'm sorry.
We did adopt.
It was adopted by resolution?
By, by resolution, under the consent. There wasn't, we never discussed it. We just adopted it. Correct? I believe that's correct. So we didn't, I, I haven't heard, I've never heard anything about it until just a couple of months ago.
I believe the discussions on the strategic plan happened over a, a number of meetings with Global Golf. The resolution was through the consent agenda, but it was discussed in multiple meetings before the consent.
That was November of 2018.
Correct. That was the resolution, yes.
So it went like dead for two years, and now it's been resurrected? I'm just curious, I, I don't, I'm just trying to figure out how this all happened. Now all of a sudden, it's the big, it's going to be a big part of our deal. And I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm just trying to figure out, what, why didn't we talk about it for two years?
We have, I, I would say that my experience would be that we haven't amplified it a lot, but we certainly had come up for discussion as kind of the ruling body. We just haven't done anything to analyze it until now. We're doing a much better job of, of analyzing it and looking what the priorities are again. But it's come up as a, as a pathway, just hasn't been emphasized.
Well, I can have a little comment because I think I was the only the one that was on the board, maybe Joe was by then. But that was a document done that we hired to do, and, and I don't think there was one supervisor agreed with very much of that report, Ray.
I'll say this the first time I see.
Yeah. So I, I, I too agree that I, I thought it was well long gone because the stuff that, most of the stuff they recommended in there, I sure enough didn't agree with. But, you know, and that's, I don't know the rest of the story, but I just know that all the supervisors were very unhappy with what they come up with. And I, I will be against probably 90% of the stuff that's, that was recommended by this Global Golf.
Well, we all passed it.
Yeah, well.
We all proved it. I can say that because I went back and listened to it.
I don't, I don't remember, but there was so much of it that wasn't agreed to, and I don't know, and maybe we just passed it again, get rid of it, but.
I wasn't on the board at the time, but I know when I came on the board, it was given to me as the overriding strategic plan.
Yeah, and that's what they were hired to do, but personally.
I mean, we're going to go over it.
Yeah, I'm going to go over that.
If that's going to be the new.
And I'll explain what we've done because we've met internally over the last two years over, over the strategic plan. But let me, let me get through this page, and then we'll go on to move on to the strategic plan discussion.
Okay.
So moving on to the goals and objectives, we're, we're going to talk about the strategic action plan today, and then I'll bring the, the plan back to you with final approval scheduled for January 8th, 2021. The next item was to perform a review of the current evaluation process and compare and compare to other local governments, special districts. In yellow, what I've commented here is since I would like to include multiple governments in my analysis, a determination on the next best course of action and recommendations will be discussed, and I have planned that for February of 2021.
Related to that, I would like to see job descriptions for your directory course.
Okay. The next item was the discussion about securing a PGA event or major outside events. And in listening to the audio, I know that, that the board went back and forth on that, and I am recommending that we move that to our Strategic Action Plan as number 27. And so, again, the response, you know, we went back and forth about responsibilities, who's responsible, how do we secure currently, you know, my, I mean, you wanna just give an update where we are, but I, you know, it is gonna be a difficult road, you know, to, to secure an LPGA event. And we are, you know, if you wanna give an update quickly.
Yeah, I've, I've spent a lot of time trying to, to work through this and make it happen. So, I've, I've been in talks with the Symmetra Tour, which is the, the tour below the, the main LPGA Tour, in trying to bring an event here to Sun and Lake. The biggest job of, to overcome on that is securing a large sponsor of over $100,000, $120,000. I've spoke to, you know, the, the regional marketing director with Advent Health, who deals with the Buccaneers, who deals with the Lightning, deals with the Magic. And when they went through their budget process, obviously, we can all agree that the healthcare system's struggling right now. So, they felt it was not in their best interest to put that sort of marketing dollars in their budget for this year. I've reached out to other larger corporations, I've actually reached out to the other hospital, and I've reached out to all sorts of things.
We're talking about her.
I understand. But, so that, what she's getting to is, is that event, at this point, is, is not looking good for September. So, I think she's looking at...
I, I've moved it out of my goals and objectives to the Strategic Action Plan, because this is gonna be a group effort for our community.
Good.
Okay, so, we can, we can look at it as part of the strategic plan instead of if it's part of your job description.
Okay. Moving on to providing and maintaining utility systems for the health, safety, and welfare of the district's residential and commercial property owners. I have added that the Phase One estimated completion time is February 2021, which determines available funding for upcoming projects and documentation required for funding applications. The initial quote for this from beginning to end was about an $80,000 price tag. And I don't feel that that is the, the best option for us, okay? That's why I have not brought it to you. The Phase Two begins the project prioritization, cost analysis, and preliminary estimates. So, I'm working through what would be the best options for us to move forward with the master plan, but with that type of price tag, I'm going back to the drawing board just a little bit.
Okay, this one, this one went right over my head. So, you're coming up with a plan to improve what?
Utility system.
Utility system. So, you're doing like a five-year utility system improvement plan?
Not for $80,000.
Huh?
Not for $80,000.
Well, I'm asking, what do we, what is this?
Well, the reason for a master plan is that we have put together a five-year and even further out on utilities, and we've, we've looked at our prioritization of projects. And first and foremost, we have water lines that have asbestos in them. And those water lines need to be replaced. And there is available funding, we believe, through either state revolving fund or grants to do so. And in order to apply for funding, you have to have some sort of a master plan in place, approved by the board, and that's what we're...
I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to do.
Yeah, so that's kind of...
This is a five-year plan on utilities?
Yeah.
Improvement on utilities?
It might be further out, but we're, we're working through...
A five, 10-year improvement plan on our utility?
It's a, it's a long-term master plan, so she's not...
Can't we just say that?
Kind of what she said.
Really?
Are you adding in long-term or five-year? I mean, I don't know if it's just five years, I mean...
It's what you're trying to do, I wanna know what you're trying to accomplish.
So, that's what I'm trying to accomplish, number one, is some of these larger utility projects, especially, I, I use that one as an example, because I do know that we have a possibility of two and a half miles of, of lines with asbestos in them. And so, in order, it's, it's not a cheap solution. So, there are funds available for us, and I wanna be sure we can tap into that.
So, sometime in May, you're gonna come to us and say, here's the master plan for utilities, I believe we can do it over this amount of years, and these are the cost, estimated costs at this point in time.
Correct.
What do you think?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm still struggling with what you got here, Tanja. Objectives is supposed to be what we plan, what you plan on accomplishing in a macro sense for the whole year. So that at the end of the year, you've achieved, for instance, going to reduce manpower requirements by 10% by December 31st. You did that, you reduced it by 10%, you met that objective. Or you exceeded that objective, or you didn't meet the objective. I, I still see this as primarily, you know, that if this was your objective for this fiscal year, you'd be done shortly after the first of the year, 2020, with the exception maybe of this utility system. I still see these as primarily tasks associated to something that you have in mind at a macro level to achieve as the General Manager of the District. That, to me, is the objective, and whether or not, and somehow, we need to measure that against what, you know, you tend to reduce overtime by X number of dollars, you tend to be district expenses by X. To me, these are tasks associated in achieving that, whatever those objectives are. Now, I don't know how rest of you feel about that, but to me, these aren't objectives or goals. And maybe I'm, maybe I need to change my view on what we're looking for her to do. Sorry, I'm not at the microphone. But that's what I'm seeing.
And, and that, that type of detail, I, I use an example of the F and B labor. You know, we've talked about F and B labor. And a more specific objective would be to reduce F and B labor by 5% or 10%. And then you, you put it together, deadline, so I understand that. These are probably more of a, on a broad term. But if you, if you would like to sit down with me, and we can sit down and talk, you know, in just more detail about this, I'd be glad to.
Well, I think, I think it has to be a combination. I mean, I think, I think what you just said about the F and B, I'm not picking on that one particular issue.
That's a, that's a specific example of a detail.
That, that would be a great one to use, but I think these are just as important as well. It's gotta be a combination of, of items that we can say, yea, they were achieved, and no, they weren't achieved. Well, yeah, this is a work in progress. I mean, to me, the most important thing, which doesn't even get a lot of space, is the budget.
Yep.
And now, you did put it in there.
You hit, you need to, that's part of it. You exceeded the, you exceeded the budget requirements by 10%. You had a 10% savings or something. That is a, that is a goal and objective. And the goal is you've achieved a 10% reduction in the total expenses related to this budget. That's your job to manage, and I see. That's, these are avenues that you may use in order to achieve that. And that's fine, but those, that's tasks associated to the objective, as I see it.
I mean, do you realize that we have no clue how we perform every year?
Actually, Omar is gonna speak to that.
Well, he's got the numbers moving all over the place. I don't know, if the expenses are $10 million, I don't know how much we spend. We move stuff everywhere.
We, we have those year-end numbers, we provide you the financials. Omar was gonna give us a, a year-end update during monthly reports.
Okay.
All right, moving on to providing adequate and convenient open space recreation facilities. We've, we received the cost estimates from SMNE. Am I saying that right, SMNE? We received that yesterday or the day before. Now that we have that, we will be providing that to Guardian, which is the, we, we've contracted with Guardian to provide us grant funding options based on what we've, you know, we have for cost estimates. So, we want to be able to find what is available for us based on some of the items that he presented during the recreation master plan discussions. So, we should have those, maybe by December 31st is what I'm estimating from Guardian. And we will be presenting that to the board, possibly in January, and depending on his schedule, but I don't know if that's gonna be January 8th or the 24th yet, we'll, we'll look at that.
I mean, the objective should really should be, you know, this is the first two steps, but we have to make a decision on whether we're gonna go forward, and if we are, to what extent, by a certain date, by August of next year.
And a lot of that has to do with what grant funding options are available to us, too, I'm sure. You know, once we see that, so.
Okay, I'd like to go back to Craig's point. I, I would like personally for you to come up with five, and I'm just picking a number out, five statistical objectives. You can relate them all to the budget for all I care, on things that you would like, that you think we can approve upon, and to what extent we can approve upon them, that you will take responsibility for. And add it on, I'm not saying substitute, let's add it on to this.
I can do that.
Okay.
And I, and I think that, I think that is very true, what we need to be looking at. And all of these items are what supports your statistical goal. If you, if you achieve this, you will get this from it, is what I'm looking, what I think is, what's needed.
Understood. And then the last item here, develop a plan to sell district-owned property available, and then promote development through marketing and comprehensive planning. Ariel has provided me the updated Sun and Lake plan, the marketing plan overview, so I do have how we're gonna achieve our, our budget goal for marketing and what our estimated impressions would be, you know, through that process. So, I have received that. As far as, as district-owned property, we don't really have much anymore. We're selling it as, pretty much as fast as we have it available. So, the next part of that conversation is the county-owned lots. I met with, oh, I was gonna go over this in my General Manager's Report, but quickly. I met with Commissioner Kerewak. He is the new chairman for our Board of County Commissioners, and I met with him last Friday. He visited Sun and Lake. I, I showed him some of our facilities, but we talked about this topic for some time, about county-owned lots, the process that the county has available, and what we can do as a team to see that we sell these lots. And I believe that there, we can put together a plan for that. So, he, he's gonna be talking with staff, and possibly, I might be meeting with him very soon on some sort of a plan that we can discuss how to keep, you know, moving, pushing this forward. And he, he needs to understand the process first, so that's something that him and I will work on together.
Okay. Can I ask a quick question? I, I don't know if, I had it for Omar when he got there, but you're too far down on the list. When is the next county sale for lots?
They currently don't have the next one advertised yet. I wanna assume that it's gonna be January, they usually do it every two months. I wanna say that they skipped December because of the holidays and some of the things going on. So, I would forecast January 21 would probably be the next, next sale.
Okay, are we kinda hoping that they not worry about holidays and...
We're hoping they are. I, I know that they're going through a lot of employee transitions on their end, too. They've had some changes over there. So, I'm sure they're dealing with their own internal conflict, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
So, you're gonna bring this back next month?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We should sign off before the year's over.
That brings us to the next discussion item, which is the Strategic Action Plan, which we had some preliminary discussion on, but why don't you walk us through that?
Okay. So, on the first page, I've provided you our mission statement and vision. The reason I do that is I, I wanna be sure that, that my, you know, as staff and as a board, we understand who we are and what we are. Global Golf focused really more on, on golf as we went through this planning process. So, in November of 2018, the board adopted 26 items that Global Golf had recommended as an initiative action. What we did internally, internally, is we assigned this to, to staff, and I've summarized for you on pages one through five, excuse me, four, where, you know, where we are with this process. So, pages one through four is a summary, okay? And then what I've done behind those pages is broken it out into different sections. So, page five is a working document. And this is the document that we're gonna bring, bring back to the board so that you understand where we are headed with some of our initiatives, okay? So, that's what page five is. I'm sorry, you don't have pages, page numbers on the, on the bottom, so.
We got it.
So, those are, that's the working document that we will continue to work forward in our Strategic Action Plan.
There's a heading at the top of the document, even if we don't have a page number.
That'll be a working document. The next page are the completed initiatives based on what the board approved in 2018. So, if you can see the original initiative numbers, and the status of those are complete. And then there were...
Well, I, I got it. I don't know how you can possibly say that 15 is done, myself. What's marketing, what marketing plan? What do, what do we do? We got an increased budget for marketing. What have you done? Where are we at?
Well, I don't know, I can say two of them.
Well, I, I've identified some that I just moved.
Global Golf, their initial request was that we hire a third-party company to assist in that initial marketing initiative, branding, logo, and all that. So, the board adopted WDM, World Design Marketing, to assist us in that.
Your call.
That, that was just the initial recommendation from Global Golf, is to increase our marketing budget, which we did, and, and to support a third-party assistance, or get us, get us support from WDM.
And we played that out, it didn't work well, we didn't approve going forward with them. So, that's your perspective that it's complete, although...
That's the perspective on that, yes, sir.
I don't think that that means that we shouldn't still have a strategy for improving our marketing.
Yes, and I, I do have that from Ariel. We've put together our own internal strategy on marketing, yes, sir.
When will we see that? When we see this marketing...
I didn't provide it to you in the board packets, but we can, I can put it together for the next meeting when we, when I present the Strategic Action Plan. Okay, so, the working document, and then, of course, the ongoing initiatives, are initiatives that Global Golf felt that we should, you know, look at. that Global Golf felt that we should, you know, look at on a regular basis. So I just put "ongoing" and then some other initiatives in the back that were not, were not, I called them unapproved essentially. So those are numbers five, 13, 14, 23 and 25. Even though Global, just for example, on the very last page, Global Golf said, well, why don't, why doesn't the club think about hosting a pay what you think it's worth day? Well, that didn't, that didn't, that was not a recommendation from the board or from the club. It was just a recommendation from Global. So that is one item, you know, where we didn't feel that that was necessary.
Why don't we go through them one by one and decide if we want to keep them? And then at the next meeting, you can show us what we selected.
Sounds good. So let's go to the working document.
Is that right?
It's just, it's getting, are we going to get done in time to eat? This is going a lot longer than I thought it would. I mean, I don't, we need to go through this race, correct? But I don't care.
So my focus to bring back to you will be the working document and the ongoing document. So if...
The managers' reports and stuff.
Okay, so what?
This is, you can't really refer to this anymore as Global Golf.
Not anymore. It's not Global Golf.
This is now Sun and Lake.
I know, and I'm sorry about the header, but this will be a Sun and Lake initiative going forward. And the first action plan was recommended by Global, but I apologize for that. This will be a Sun and Lake initiative going forward. So what, so with respect to time?
What I might suggest in the essence of time is that this is an important document. It's an important strategy for us to look at and perhaps for our, following our January meeting, we have a workshop on the strategic plan.
I think that's a good recommendation. And that way it'll give you time to look over these initiatives on the working document and then the ongoing initiatives that we can add to that. We can, you know, bring forth recommendations to me as we go through the process.
I did have one question I have to ask after this. At number 10, consider selling non-peak tee times to a third-party, provide us to attract non-local golfers. That's complete. And we do that with Golf Now. How much does that cost?
As far as this action plan goes, going through Global Golf Advisors, that was something they put on there. So we do work with Golf Now, and that, we don't physically pay Golf Now a set fee. So we pay them basically a commission. There'd be a small commission on any tee times that they may use. I'm not prepared to give you that number, but we don't have a huge market for Golf Now folks in this area. It's not a big number. It's going to be very small.
And we're not really selling non-peak times to them. We're just making them available through them.
Right. That's just how that system works.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that's where the Global Golf was suggesting. I don't know if that's the answer to what Global Golf was suggesting or whether Global Golf's suggestion was even good. I just think that's kind of a confusion to say that that completes. I would be more inclined to put selling non-peak times into a, probably not a good idea, to sell them to a third-party. Essentially, you're talking about saying, okay, well, you, Mr. Marketer, we'll sell you all of our times for $5 and you can sell them for whatever you want. And that's not what we do. And I'm not sure that would be a good suggestion. Again, I wasn't here when Global Golf was making that suggestion.
Couple of the proposals that we had in review for the next coming days has said that you shouldn't really be doing that. It's a waste of money.
Correct. And that's why it's not a huge initiative on our end.
Well, I know, but why waste any money? It would be my...
There is a small market that, in the larger markets, it works, but, you know, with all these management companies, some of them have kind of their own, their own deal. So they're going to try to steer you away from Golf Now and steer you into theirs. Because online booking is, our market is well far behind the other markets in the world, but the Golf Now is not a big thing right now. But in the future, it probably will be, or online booking, we have our own online booking service. But with the amount that this is, this is not an issue. Such a small amount, this is not an issue.
It's not like we're paying for it. We're basically paying a percentage of every golf time they sell.
Correct. It's probably like four tee times a month.
It's incrementally giving us some money, but it's inconsequential, is what you're saying.
So we're going to leave this, you're going to come up with a new, this is it going forward, what I recommend? And then we'll debate that and go from there?
Yes, sir.
And the one, the one final point I'd make before we go on to this, because it, there's always typos, but in our mission statement, we have "it's" as a contraction when it's really a possessive, and therefore there shouldn't be an apostrophe.
All right. Thank you.
And just for future, when we have five discussion items, you're talking about, you know, I think maybe we ought to have at the most two discussion things per meeting, because they tend to, I mean, I know there's people out here that probably wanted to stay and talk to us and have their own, and we're already two hours and 15 minutes and they've all had to leave. And I don't mind, but sometimes we ask the people that have concerns about stuff a little too much to sit here with all that or, you know.
You can blame me for at least one of the add-on items for the discussion.
Well, no, I don't blame you. We need to discuss it. But when you put five discussion items down on an agenda, you've got a lot of discussing. Well, then we can do something about that. Let's go to two or three a month.
All right. Understood. Thank you.
Yeah, given that, let's move on from the discussion items.
How much would pay Guardian to do with these grants?
On a research 6,000?
I just, in the last month, we had an article in the paper about the young lady that was going from the Sebring City Child Writing Grants to Highlands County.
Sir?
Are we utilizing Highlands County? We're part of the county. Why can't we utilize them for, if they're doing grants, if we can't do it ourselves, why can't we?
Well, I didn't get the response that I wanted last summer. And her, when she, when she took on the position, I talked to her about, I brought her to Sun and Lake. I showed her our recreational facilities. I said, you know, the ideas that I, that the board has is a new pool. She said, well, let me, let me look into a few things on recreation. We talked about several options, but nothing, nothing definite as far as what options we might have. So Sidney Armstrong, I believe is her name. I'm sorry, it's up to 6,000. It's not a 6,000 set fee. It's going to be billed on an hourly basis. I'm sorry. Maximum of six. I apologize. So we need to use the county more. I agree with you on that.
Okay, moving on. Item number six, add-on items.
None.
Seven, petitions and communications.
Yes. Mr. Jim Drury?
Yeah, I'll go over Mr. Drury. They were here and they had to leave for an appointment.
I have one.
Do you have one? Go ahead.
Well...
No, this isn't public comment. This is...
This is not comment. This is petition, you said.
I didn't receive any other petitions. I'm sorry.
Mike has it.
Yeah, Mike dropped it off the mic.
See, when we don't know...
Sorry, Charlie, she's the resident.
Okay.
I'm just presenting. I'm not, I presented a petition. Mike has it for speed bumps on Sunrise Drive South, South Side.
Okay. That's got to be reviewed by staff before it comes back to the board.
I understand that, but I had to come and say that.
No, no. This is petitions that have come in to staff that are here for our review.
So we do have a communication from Mr. and Mrs. Drury. They're doing a remodel on their home. There's a drawing provided to you. The reason why it's come to the board level is it's, they're proposing an additional driveway to be around about now. It does exceed the 30% requirement that's on the permit. Based on the calculation that we've done, the current proposal is about 39%, and our limit is 30%. So what they've done is they extended their home onto their driveway and are now seeking to do the double, double driveway. So they've mentioned in their letter that there are several homes under construction, T-James, several homes on Pebble Beach and Myrtle Beach that have roundabout driveway. So they feel because it's consistent with other homes, new development, that it should be approved and approved by the board.
Is this the same one we looked at that they're bringing back to us?
What was that?
We looked at one similar to this.
No, this is completely new. This is a brand-new one that's underway.
Okay. My, my suggestion would be, we've got a policy, you know, the, we're getting more and more of these requests to have more and more paved area. Now, in California, that's a good thing because they want to pave everything in California because there's no water. Here, you know, the general consensus has been that we want yards because we want beautification, not the paving of everything. If we're getting more and more requests with more and more buildings, I would suggest that we take this up as a, as an item for public comment at the landowners' meeting in January and see if the public wants us to allow 40 or 50% paving of yards rather than having yards. But based on the direction that we go, I'm not inclined to continue to give variances to the policy that says no more than 30% of your yard should be paved.
Yeah, and through conversations with the board on this communication, you know, this is an old policy that was part of code enforcement. And a problem that we see with it is that the 30% calculation is based off the front edge of the home. So if the garage sticks out very far in front of the front door, all that landscaping area from the garage to the door isn't included in our percentage, which we feel we need to modify. There needs to be a different aspect or calculation that we take into account in doing these going forward. So we feel like it's still a good policy. We just need to make some tweaks to it. Because once again, I don't feel that these are issues, as long as, once again, this is a paver driveway. It's probably going to look really nice as far as beautification purposes. The calculation percentage just doesn't seem to make sense when there's a lot of front yard still available from the garage to the front door that's not getting taken into account.
And that calculation is in the county ordinance. So any changes to that will, you know, would go through Board of County Commissioners.
Is 30% is the county ordinance?
Because it's in code enforcement, yes.
It's our code enforcement ordinance.
Yeah, which is in...
Where's the definition of front yard? Is that the county ordinance as well?
It's in the code enforcement section.
Which, once again, for the construction, we can determine and change that wording to what we see fit for these, for these new constructions. It doesn't have to coincide with our code, but we can amend that as well.
Yeah, we could do that too.
But that would be my recommendation. So we don't have to continue to deal with this. And once again, we don't want to deter new development or new addition. This is probably, you know, $150,000 new addition to their home that they're, that they're doing with an expanded driveway with pavers. So I don't think we want to deter that for new construction or remodels. So.
Well, I certainly think we ought to redo what you guys are talking about. Because when I look at them, it looks nice and there's still a yard. But, and I don't like the fact that we have to keep doing a special favor. And I look at it, and we have so many homes that you guys know that it just did it and didn't even ask.
Right.
And to me, if it was an eyesore, I wouldn't have approved any of them and got upset with the people who did it. But I'd like to see that done, where you can do the calculation. And I also would just, my opinion is I'd like to approve this for them. But I, we need to change something so they don't have to come here.
Yeah.
Because I don't want somebody to put 70% bricks in their yard. I mean, I don't think any of us want that. But when I look and see what's illegal, looks nice.
Right.
So I'll just say that.
So how are you going to tweak the requirement that this would then fit within that requirement?
I think we need to reword it where it includes all the way up to the front of the home, which is the front door, the bedroom, all that extra, you know, front yard. It also doesn't include the right-of-way, which is somewhat grass. So you only see that red box that kind of snips out the middle section. I think it needs to be expanded to the entire front yard for what we see purposes and what's going to be green and what's going to be paved. That would be my, because once again, we've run into issues on this with just a single, not even a double driveway, just a single three-car garage. Driveway now falls into this 30% rule depending on the size of the lot. It's not even excessive. It's just a single three-car garage, and which is kind of normal now here in Sun and Lake with these new developments, especially with a golf cart garage as well. So I think that will remedy this and prevent, the only ones that'll come to the board will be kind of excessive in nature that we feel is too much. And more than likely, the contractors will modify before it comes to the board in those cases.
Okay, so how do we go about tweaking that language?
I can come up with a proposed revision to the definition of front yard, because I think if we just, like Omar said, if we include the right-of-way section, and then if we tweak the definition of front yard to include the easternmost, or the, the portions of the house that are closest to the property line. Like if we look at that, if we include the right-of-way and then the, where that first, up there at the north, the north end of the house where that, you know, where that jog comes out, if we take that corner, I think we're already at, we get all that additional green. I think we're already at 30% probably, if we include the right-of-way as well. Because that's what we were looking, I mean, the main gist of this restriction is for appearances. So.
In the interim, I move that we improve this exception.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Public comment.
Any public comment?
Where is that house?
It's on Pebble Beach.
I think I live right next to it.
No, it's not the one, it's not the one that's by you, Bill. That's building the carport. That's not...
4711. I haven't circled the driveway also.
Okay. Call a question?
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Branson? Supervisor Harriet?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Hotelling?
No.
But I do look forward to seeing the tweaks that will make this appropriate. Okay, any other petitions?
None.
Okay. Staff reports.
Well, Mike go, and then Ariel has a quick update, and then Omar.
Sure. I'll try to be brief here. I had quite a bit today, but I'll try to go through it here quickly. Starting on the maintenance side, I'm sure everybody's noticed the oversea is complete on both courses in the driving range. Toro Run had a little bit of a head start. So if you go out there and look at the fairways on Turtle, you'll see that the, a lot of the oversea has germinated. So it's starting to look green out there. We should probably see that here in another week or so on here. Obviously, we all understand that we have a lot of extra cart traffic on the course. So we have over 5,000 linear feet of rope trying to direct traffic to limit wear and tear on high-volume areas or choke points. So we're trying to navigate through that as best as possible. We are having some issues in areas that are wearing out rather quickly. It's actually been a little colder earlier in the year, so that's kind of made the rough be very dormant, especially on Turtle, which it doesn't heal from cart wear quite as much. So we're trying to do the best we can to move the traffic around to limit that. Kind of a hot topic for me. We're going to get those white tee markers painted to get them back to white. That should be done hopefully here by the end of next week. I'm sorry that took so long. That was a huge problem for me too. So it is on, it is on the schedule.
On the oversea, did you guys, have you got signs that say drive on the fairways for when we want that to happen?
We don't have signs for that. That communication will be coming out, you know, our newsletter's coming out here very shortly, and there'll be some email blasts on that. But as far as signage, we'll probably correct. as signage, we'll, we'll probably correct. You know, we'll be using, we'll be directing traffic one way or the other, but I don't have a, a specific sign that says drive on fairway.
Mike, we talked about this. We spent sixty thousand dollars to oversee both courses, and we can't make signs up telling people what to do? Why did we talk about?
I mean.
I give.
I mean, that would be a pretty extensive sign project for thirty, thirty-six hours.
Some sixty thousand dollars worth of oversea. Those, those signs that Joe used for his election, what was it, Joe? How much? Four bucks. Four bucks a thing.
I mean, we could do that. I'd, I would, I would disagree with the board in doing that. I think it's an eye, it would be an eyesore. But I feel we can accomplish the project in other ways that, I mean, I just don't think that would look good. You'd have, how many of those would you have? You'd have thirty-six of those at the end of every cart path, and we'd-
When will that go into effect? When is the time to start driving on the fairways?
I mean, now.
What do you got to tell, I mean, do you think anybody knows?
That information is scheduled to go out.
But putting it in stupid email blast is not, that's not accomplishing anything. Have we met with the group leaders to tell them, this is what we need you guys to do? Tell you people. I mean, it's things like that. That's how we get it going.
Correct. And that, that, that is, will be going down. So with some wet weather and some overcast that we had, you know, basically the last month and a half, we have had some disease pressure on the greens. Pythium is, is the one that we've, that we've noticed on a few greens. Luckily, it hasn't become a big issue. So preventative and curative applications have been applied to the greens. As, as we see some sunnier, drier conditions, this will subside. Should not have any, any issues with that. But pythium is something that's, that is scary, but we are on top of it. Moving to membership, again, I'll try to be brief here, give you some of the highlights. With our fifty percent off program, we have now, to date, thirty-four of those have expired. Eighteen of those have rejoined. So that keeps us still over the fifty percent mark, which I think is awesome. Year to date, we have signed up twenty-four more. So thirty-four expired, twenty-four new ones have joined. So even the, even the second year rate is higher than, than we predicted. We figured after year one, we wouldn't have the population to keep signing up more because we start to check people off the list that are eligible. So that program is, is doing well. It's, it's really helping us out. All right. So year to date, we have sold eight hundred and sixty-two thousand in memberships. Okay? Just to give you a number, last year at this time, we were at a little bit over a million. So we're roughly a hundred and forty to a hundred and fifty thousand behind pace of last year. But if you remember, the budget last year was a little bit more. So we're at about eighty-three percent as of last year. Now, and this can get-
Seventy percent to last year.
Last year's pace.
Last year's pace.
Year to date.
And I assume a lot of that is because we haven't had the words come back.
Yeah. So there's, there is a delayed effect. So there's, there could be a lot of theories of how this could end up playing out. But just so you know, through eleven days in December, we've sold twenty-two thousand in memberships. So we're still actively signing them up. I, I, last year, from this point to the end of the year, we sold a hundred and six thousand dollars in memberships from today moving forward last year. This could go a lot of different ways. But my prediction is, I feel we still have a very good chance of hitting our budgeted membership number, which is one million, forty thousand. There is a chance that we could do that. Now, it could go a lot of different ways. I mean, we, there's a lot of things that could change that variable. I know on our long-term forecasting that I've been spending the last week or so on, we've actually budgeted for a miss, about nine hundred and fifty to nine hundred and sixty thousand, which would be another, basically, a hundred thousand from here to the rest of the year. That's what's going into my long-term forecast as far as, you know, trying to figure out what we need to do the rest of the year to try to still make our budget. Now, if we come in and we make budget, that's a bonus. I'm still hopeful we can.
I think you're going to have quite a few people down here after the first.
I, I'm counting on that, and I'm hoping they stay longer. So time will only tell on that one. It's, it's just absolutely, you know, educated guesses at this time. As we said, Thanksgiving, we served two hundred and forty dine-in meals and a hundred and twenty takeout meals, so a total of three hundred and sixty meals. I thought that was excellent. I was not expecting quite that much. I was really happy with that.
Can, can we go back to memberships for one minute?
Sure.
How many of those special foreign?
The international members? Yes. So I don't have the exact number, but I think in November, it was something like six or seven. And I think we're right about that number. Because they could sign up on the first or the fifteenth, and we're coming close to the fifteenth here. So those folks would, I'm assuming most of them were on the fifteenth.
Can you send that out in an email when you have that, after the fifteenth, to us?
You, I'll send you the December number.
Yeah, well, I'm curious. You know, we made a special-
Yeah. So there is a few of them here. There is a few of them here. So we've signed up at least seven, and, and it could grow as more have just arrived. So.
Oh, yeah, it'll grow. But I'm just curious where we are. Thank you.
Okay. So we do have several small Christmas parties in December. Obviously, it's not like we would normally do. But it is exciting to see that, I actually have a calendar. You probably can't see it from there, but it's got several different events on there. Basically, from here to the end of the month, we got, from here to Christmas, we basically have only two days without something going on. So that's rather good. On another note, we have three weddings scheduled for December, between here and the rest of, for the, from here to the rest of the month. We have one on the thirteenth, the twenty-first, and the thirty-first. Three weddings. These aren't giant weddings. They're, the two that I know of are scheduled are around fifty people. The last one that, that it's going to be kind of a, a earlier-
That's a big deal here.
On the thirty-first. They just booked, so I don't have a confirmed guesstimate on how many people they're bringing. But it's probably in that same fifty to, so they're smaller weddings. But it's exciting that we have three, that, that some of these have postponed to this point. But, so it's a little exciting. We're starting to see a little bit of move there. And as we'll present at a later date, I will kind of show you where we're going into the future as far as banquet sales. And, you know, when we're going to really ramp that up, you'll see that, obviously, here in a couple of days. I told you about the New Year's dinner, kind of what we're going to do there, so we don't have to go over that. On the golf report side of things, in November, we did demo days, which was mid to late November, so I didn't get to tell you, but we did over twenty-two thousand dollars in sales on that last revenue date. And I can't tell you how remarkable that is in this market. So that's super. So those, those revenues are starting to be realized now because they, when the product, they don't get realized until the product comes in and we make the transaction and the sales. But, so that's helping us out there. Update on the cart fleet. Our new carts will be here. The first truck will arrive Sunday afternoon, and the rest of them will arrive Monday morning. So we will have a new fleet.
What's color are they?
They are electric blue. I have a picture. I'll show you at the break if you want to see what they're going to look like. I'm not very good at picking that stuff out. My wife always told me that. But I did, I did pick the colors on that. I think Tanya's seen it. I think they look sharp. All right. So the discussion came up about the Citrus Golf Trail. I wanted to bring that up to you. So obviously, we're a part of the Citrus Golf Trail. We had a fan trip, which is basically, we had some riders come in from all over the country. They came in, they played Pinecrest, they played River Greens, they, they came and played nine holes here on Turtle on Wednesday. And Mr. Hotteling was really kind to, to meet with the group before they teed off and, and gave him a brief history of Sunny Lake, which was super nice. And, and we thank him for that. That trip went off, you know, really, really well. They were excited. They loved the place. And then we had a big press conference yesterday over at Pinecrest. Andy was actually the, the lead on that. He made the, he was the one that made the announcement as part of the Citrus Golf Trail that we are going to host. The Citrus Golf Trail is going to host a very large tournament starting a year from now, next December, is when we're going to host this event. It's going to be a multi-day, multi-facility event. And it's not focused on golfers here in Highlands County. This is scheduled to bring golfers in from basically all over the country. And we're working with a third-party group and, and trying to obtain that goal. But we're looking to try to make this an annual event. It's going to benefit our local Boys and Girls Club in trying to get them introduced to the game of golf. It's kind of our goal on that. So we're trying to create more golfers through this event. But we're also creating, I mean, it's a huge marketing deal. We're trying to get some folks down here to see, see what Highlands County has to offer in golf and kind of put Sebring on the map as far as it goes with, with, with economic golf. So it's very exciting. A lot to come on that. It's still a little bit in the early stages, but we've been working on this for over a year now. So it's, it's great to see it finally come to fruition. And like I said, me and Andy have been very integral in, in, in all that in conjunction with the Highlands County TEC. Again, I'm sorry, getting long-winded here. So we are going to go through, I'm going to basically perform a full facility audit. It's something that we have always done every year through IGP or Indigo Golf Partners, formerly Billy Casper, is something that we do every year. We want to make sure we're following all of our company policies and procedures, and also regarding safety. So we do this audit every year, just to make sure we're following all our procedures, cash handling to advertising, to safety, you know, you know. When we did the bridge replacement on Turtle a few years ago, that came up in a facility audit that, you know, that we got moving forward. So that'll be performed. It needs to be completed by the end of the year. So I'll probably be out and around doing that. Another big announcement, as Craig, you touched on somebody leaving the Sebring Chamber of Commerce. Not that it's necessarily related to that particular thing, but I have been nominated to chair the Sebring Chamber of Commerce Board starting in January of twenty-one. So I will be the chairman of the board of the Sebring Chamber of Commerce for fiscal, well, for year twenty-twenty-one. So that's exciting news. We do a lot of good stuff with the Chamber. So I'm excited to participate with them, help them out. We do a lot of good events like Sebring Soda Festival and things like that. So that'll just increase my involvement in some of those things.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I didn't see it in the board packet, but I sent you the thing about the Twilight Golf Membership. Did you guys get that information from that?
No. What is that?
The Twilight Golf Membership? That, that, make it through to them?
They didn't get anything. I was just going to recommend on that, since it has to do with another type of membership, that we just wait and table it till next spring when we talk about budgets. I mean, I don't know what to say. We're not going to, I mean, it wasn't in the agenda, so I figured nobody cared. So.
No, I, I, it was, it was meant to be.
Is that like we don't have enough memberships to choose from?
No, that's correct. I'm okay with that. I think we could miss a potential boat on that. You know, if we're looking at about, if we're looking at ten thousand dollars worth, worth of revenue here in, in this capacity, just to put this in perspective, ten thousand dollars in, in membership virtually goes to the bottom line because there's, there's not going to be a ton of cost associated with that. That's literally like me finding a hundred thousand dollars or more in food and beverage revenue.
You would choose the membership if you say you can. That's going to be like a miracle anyway. So I'll be happy.
This would go to help that.
Mike, I got one comment on the, I'm glad that we're having a tournament. I think that's good for the community, for the, for the, what do you, what do you call it, the trail?
Is the Citrus Golf Trail?
Citrus, yeah. Because it's been, I think when I was the president in sixteen, I met with them. They've been here in a bus two, three times, I think.
As far as the fan trips?
Yeah.
Yes, we have had them.
So it's, it's not something new, but I'm glad that you guys are a little more involved in it. But it, it can only help us. But I, I always have questioned how much good it does, but I don't care because anything this positive-
Right.
-can't hurt us. So.
Yeah. And a lot of that, you know, has worked through the TDC.
They've certainly came here in that same, I think it's the same writer, really pushes, loves this area, Highlands County.
Yeah.
And I, I even thanked him for loving this county because, again, I don't know how good it does, but it don't hurt us.
Absolutely.
And I, I'm glad that there's going to be a tournament or something, just to add something. So that, that's a positive.
Did everybody, they got forwarded the article, was it the Long Island?
Yes.
The Long Island golfer, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. But I've read, I, we've had, we were lead in two or three magazines in, in the past year.
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't anything new, but it doesn't hurt to do it. Other, this tournament is, is something that-
The more free publicity we can get.
Yeah, that's right. So you can't complain about it.
No, absolutely. It, it, it's all part of the long-term process. All right. Sorry, I know that was long-winded.
You're done.
I am done.
All right. I have just a couple of updates on upcoming events. Before that, Tanya already kind of mentioned the update on SMNE, and that we did, we have received the cost estimates. We look forward to reviewing those and should be sending that out along with a revised timeline next week. So upcoming events, well, one isn't upcoming anymore. It happened yesterday. We had the Santa Paws fundraising event for the Sebring Angels Animal Rescue. We had Santa Claus there, and residents or whomever can come and make a ten-dollar donation so that they can have their pet's picture taken with Santa Claus. Those pictures are then emailed to them digitally so that they can put those on a Christmas card or whatever they see fit. We were able to take photos of about fifty dogs, and we made a three-hundred and sixty-one dollar donation to the Sebring Angels. So they were very appreciative of that. This year, we will also be doing our Christmas Light Challenge. This is going to be the third year that we've done that. We currently have twenty-four homes that have been enrolled to do this, which is even an improvement from last year. That's about six homes more than we had last year. So that was, that was really great. It's growing every year. From here, Kelly's putting together a nice little map that we will send out so that residents or visitors in the community can take their map and follow it along toward the community and see the houses that have been dressed up for the holidays. And the judging for that will be next Thursday evening. So there's a, a time that we have our judges go around. We take them around in a vehicle. They do the judging, and then we have gift cards for the winners, like we have the last three years. And then finally, mid-January, January sixteenth, we will hold our annual yard sale again. So we've got the information for that in the newsletter, and it's been pushed out on social media and email blast.
So just a couple of quick updates for me. Obviously, as part of consent agenda this today was the September financials for both the General Fund, Utility Fund, and the Golf Fund. Wanted to see if there was any questions. We just wrapped up our year-end audit this week. Auditors were here making sure all the numbers were right and pulling some of their samples. I expect that to be an unmodified opinion again for the fifth year in a row. Wanted to mention that we are on pace to, we're seventy thousand dollars higher in assessment revenues right now compared to November of last year. So we are getting additional revenues. The majority of that is new construction, county lot sales that have been purchased, and hopefully some of these phase-five bond settlements that are coming through. We have about twenty-five pending settlements with phase-five. We're still trying to work out some of the details on the district side for some of those settlements, but that's going to be a big push. Typically, each settlement is about, you know, three thousand to forty-five hundred dollars in additional district assessments that's going to be recouped per property. So that'll be a big, big push this year. For the September financials, we were about a thousand dollars off from last year's performance. So assessments last year were almost spot-on year over year. As far as financials, the General Fund ended up with a nineteen thousand dollar positive net income, so almost completely balanced. That did include seven hundred thousand dollars being transferred from the Utility Fund to the General Fund. That did include half of the kitchen remodel that we finished up last year, too. That was four hundred and twenty thousand. That was included in there. And then the Utility Fund had a positive one hundred and sixty-six thousand, which a hundred and thirty of that we carried over to finish the grinder projects. So pretty much spot-on. Both, both funds were break-even with the seven hundred thousand dollar transfer between the two. So if there's any questions on the financials, I can go over that. But pretty consistent.
How many permits have we had this year?
What was that?
How many permits have we had this year?
We are just around eighty-five right now at the moment. I think we just processed number eighty-five this week. So, yeah, it's, it's not slowing down at all. Hasn't slowed down through COVID, hasn't slowed down through the holidays. Contractors are making their year-end push to try and finalize some of these for the holidays. But I'll, I'm assuming they're going to ramp back up starting January. We'll get some more. We'll get some more.
I apologize, Omar, but you might have told me, but I forgot our policy on when somebody moves into the house, do they pay a prorated assessment?
So typically, that's handled through the closing transaction. So if the contractor owned it from January to November, they're going to pay and credit them for the 11 months. That homeowner will then pay from November to December on the closing. So there's a prorated amount on the closing side. It's not coming from the district.
Okay, so we won't get anything till the next year? Is that what you're saying?
Well, usually the contractor, whoever owns it as of November will pay the full bill.
Okay, they pay it then?
Yeah. We get paid in full no matter what.
It's in the closing.
Yeah, that's what he said. But I didn't know if they only took it up to the, to the.
Yeah, we don't prorate anything on the district side. We build a full year.
Okay, thank you.
For the last three years, neutralizing any increases, can you tell, tell us what, what the assessments have come from?
So yeah, so for, with the exception of the last two years, the last two years have been right at $3.2 million. That was because of the vacant lot decrease that we performed two years ago, and that's been consistent. Once again, last year, this year was only $1,000 off, right at 3.2 million. Before that, we were performing right around 3.4. So we went down about $150,000 in those, in these last two years. We expect that to go back up. We've projected our budget to be right around 3.35 with some of these properties coming back on the table from the county, phase five settlements coming through, and just some of those amounts shuffling through. We knew it was going to be a little bit of a process, but we've also implemented new collection processes, which is, hasn't been an issue. We haven't got a lot of complaints. People are paying their full assessments now right off the bat, so I think that's going to help a lot, which I think that's attributed to some of the $70,000 increase. So I think just all these different factors will help us see, or get us back up to that 3.4 where we were before.
And we knew that that was, that was going to be a hit when we did it. It's unfortunate, but I think in the long run, it's the best decision that we made.
Yeah, the one that will be interesting this next year will be utilities. Utilities had a $400,000 increase from year to year in revenues, and that was all attributed to new construction. So we had, you know, the AD new construction, but part of that too was Turn Two Brewery, which is a large, they paid for an additional extension of the water system to go to that facility. We had a couple on Granada Boulevard that paid in excess of 20 grand just to get water services down to their properties, which went straight down to utilities. And then Magnolia Golf for Hornick, he paid over $80,000 in connection fees for that, for that unit. The board agreed to a 50-50 split, so he was only, he paid 50% upfront, which was 40 grand to the 12th unit. He's exceeded the 12th unit now and he's come in and made his other deposit. So he's paid up in full for Magnolia Golf. So, you know, we won't see those revenues going forward, but hopefully we see more new construction to keep our revenues in line. Also factored in there was the, the rate increases that we put in last year too, and that was about $200,000 in excess that went straight to the bottom line in utilities. So it was a big help.
Speaking to Mr. Hornick, how's the due diligence?
He wants to meet with me next week to discuss it.
They're bad.
I don't know yet. I don't know. I, I don't, I don't know if that means that he has bad news or good news, but I, but I'd like to wait until, you know, and I'll update the board.
You will let us know though, right?
I will.
When you know.
Yes.
One thing that I wanted to mention is we, the board decided to put about $500,000 in major capital expenses on hold because we didn't know what the pandemic was, was going to entail in our revenues. On the district side, we haven't seen any hiccups as far as revenues. Golf just mentioned that on memberships, we're only down about 150 grand, and he's still optimistic on that. Do we want to release the hold and I'll start planning forward on some of that?
Why?
Well, we're only down 100,000, so our revenues aren't affected. It's within our budget means, everything budgeted to an even budget. I don't see at this point why we would hold.
I can't wait until next, the first year to do that.
So the only reason I ask that is so we can start planning to bring that to the board. Most of these projects are still coming back through an RFP process or state contract approval. They're probably in excess of 25 grand. So the board, we can get some of these at the January meeting for equipment, maybe the Turtle Run Bulkhead.
Equipment is the one that I want to sit on. We got some analysis to do there.
Because we got, the RFPs are going to take some time, but the equipment, we can at least start working to get them in the pipeline because they still got to be manufactured and delivered to us just like the cart, cart lease kind of.
We wouldn't want to be doing the bulkhead during this season, would we?
Yeah, probably not. Just, that was just one that came off topic. I know it's been a safety concern, but.
I haven't seen any September, October, or November numbers. Why, you all feel good that we're going to make the numbers?
Well, we haven't decreased, but we'll get you those, those treasury statements out for the next.
We'll wait till next month. I don't see any reason to rush into it. We seem to have no problem spending money when we're ready to.
Well, it was an even budget. It's not like we were budgeting in excess.
I do have a couple of questions pertaining to this afternoon for you. Is there a way, you know how we have the, the, his budget is laid out and his budget is laid out in such a way on a paper where it says how much money we're giving them? I'm not explaining this correctly.
The subsidy?
Huh?
The subsidy?
Yeah, the subsidies. Can we give him a budget without the subsidies in it and show how much he's losing? Any company, whether it's him or Trune or.
So typically, it's the bottom net loss number. So if, for example, if Indigo presented the 180, it's $180,000 in subsidy that we're going to give them.
I know we legally have to do that for our own bookkeeping, but they don't care about that and I don't care about that. Why don't, in other words, Casper, in his, one of his remarks in that thing was, well, we made budgets seven out of eight years or something like that.
Right.
Well, that's because we.
Yeah, that's, that's not even important.
Yeah, I mean, why can't we just?
I thought we took the, our, our fill-in on that sheet that you gave him, gave us, you minus all of that support out, and the numbers that were there were the raw numbers of this is how much you're actually going to be losing.
Correct.
Without any supplement from the district.
Correct.
But what I'm saying going forward, any numbers should be reported that way. I don't think I need to see the subsidies that the district's got to give them.
We can take that out of the financials. That's not a, that's, that's fine.
So we can do that?
Yeah. Typically, the subsidy doesn't even come into play until July, September, at the end of the year, once the cash flow goes down. So throughout the year, probably 10 months out of the year, you don't see the subsidy in that report anyway.
We can fix that.
Yeah.
And you will be here, right?
Correct.
Okay, good.
Secondly, can we make a decision finally to put the lease arrangements into the everyday expense?
Yeah, that's something that we can definitely do. That's, the only thing preventing that from occurring is the current contract and the board just altering that contract. The contract right now stipulates any, anything that's defined as capital currently, which capital, the capital definition is anything in excess of 5,000 with a useful life more than a year, which once again is super vague and it's just the way it was originally done with the original Billy Casper contract. So we need to amend that to exclude operating leases, which would include the equipment and the golf carts. And then that would then be recorded inside the golf fund.
Okay, well, we've been talking about it for six months. You think we can do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to do it.
I mean, it's an expense.
So I guess do we need to take a consensus on that to change the contract, David?
Well, the, it would be an amended contract, so we would have to agree to it, and also Indigo would have to agree to that amendment.
It'll have to come back.
We have to bring it back to the board.
I think they might be susceptible to that.
Maybe stipulate to everybody going forward, this is how it's going to be reported.
Yes, we can bring that back.
But we don't know what their situation.
I think however we go forward, whoever we go forward with, we'll just make sure that the contract includes the leases.
Correct.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, David?
Okay, just a couple of things. Litigation report, we're showing the Avanti still is a potential threatened litigation. We were expected that the suit was going to be filed by the end of November. There was a hiccup with Mr. Lacony's firm and the electronic filing system, but I have seen the complaint and my understanding is, is that we should have a case number today. So I reviewed the final complaint yesterday, made a couple of comments. Mr. Lacony said it would be filed today. Castro, I know that our, the litigation report states that we filed our response, Mr. Lacony filed our responsive brief, that is correct. The opposing counsel has requested an extension, so there's probably not going to be much movement on that until next year. Letting, I mean, the foreclosures, we're kind of coming to an end of the majority of our foreclosures. I think we only have one or two that are quote unquote "active." The rest are either under some sort of settlement agreement. But based on our discussion with the bondholders, it looks like there's going to be several group foreclosures that they want to initiate. Bad news for the district is after reviewing the agreement that we have with the bondholders, the district is responsible for paying for those foreclosures. The good news is, is that if the, is that we get our money back first. If we, if they get sold, all of our expensive gets covered before we remit any money to the bondholders, and if the property comes back to us, we have the right to hold on to that property and/or sell that property, and then we take all of our expenses out before we remit anything to the bondholders. So none of that has come across my desk yet, but based on my conversation with the bondholders, it's going to be forthcoming. Finally, I did get some clarification regarding.
They can force us into that expense?
Correct. That's what the agreement says. So it says the district's sole expense. So it's our expense to pay for, but we get to, you know, we, we have to pay it out, but we get to recover it before we have to remit anything to the bondholder.
I understand it's our sole expense, but we don't have, if they decide that we should foreclose, we have to foreclose.
I did get some clarification on the first, what is it, the First Amendment to the, to the bond issues. I got an email from their counsel, which I'd like to forward to you guys. If you'd like me to read it into the record, I can, but it's, I'd rather forward it to all of you. If you have any questions, send it to me and then I can forward it on, to them. But the basic gist of it is that the, the bond that is attached to the trust amendment is a form. It does have some errors that are going to be corrected, but there are going to be a significant number of blanks that remain as a form. And then when that form is completed, it will be printed on special bond paper that makes it impossible to copy, some sort of watermark or something. And then that completed document will be brought to the board for final signature. So the amendment is the approval of the basic form, and then when the actual bond document is completed, that will again come before the board for final execution. But I'll forward this email to all of you. Any questions? Otherwise, that's all I have.
Just a couple of administrative items. We do not have any assessment appeals this year, so there will not be a committee formed.
There will be a meeting now.
Also, we have six lots deeded to the district from Highlands County. Five of those were on Matanzas and one on San Ignacio for drainage. So that happened at the last Florida County Commissioners Meeting. That was a request that I did. We have, I think it's over by the Pink Palace. There's some lots that are just, that they will never be developed, never sell. So we want to obtain those from accounting for drainage purposes, so we did. Lastly, my, I mentioned to you my meeting with Scott Kerewak last Friday. We also discussed the gas tax and also grants for resurfacing. And there might be some possibility to tap into some, some of those funds. So Scott and I will be talking here in the near future. That's all I have.
Just to clarify, those lots that were deeded back to us that can't be developed, do we have any tax liability on those?
We will not. We'll be requesting a variance on, on that tax since they will not be developed.
Okay, so that brings us to unfinished business?
None.
New business?
None.
Committee reports?
None.
Public comments? Anybody from the public want to make a comment on anything?
Bill Nocras, resident, all those people who are not here that are listening to this. First of all, congratulations to Michael Mayor. Are you elected chairman or president? That's very good. Thank you very much. It's a well-deserved position. Anyhow, I want to compliment the, the staff out there because we've had a lot of rain this winter, November especially, and they've done a marvelous job and daily job of remarking the golf course. In other words, there's wet areas and you don't want to destroy the fairways and the rough and the stuff like that with tire tracks, and they've done an excellent job. The greens I've never seen in a better condition the other day. They just aerified it with the small tines, rolled extremely fast. I think they were up to about 12 and especially on the downslope. And the, the cup itself is an important factor, and they're using an extender now, a plastic extender, which really helps the visibility and the playability. Okay, what I'd like to find out is that the asphalt path, it's been in, on the budget. It's coming sometime soon because it's a mess over there. It really is. It's, it's, it's something that should be really attended to. Try to be optimistic about this whole thing and, and we've waited quite a few years for this to happen. The other question is overseeing the driving range. Now, I don't know if that's going to happen. Earl said it was $5,000, I think. I think that's a little high, but.
It's completed.
Driving range?
Correct. Done.
Great, because we did know if it was going to be passed. It's a extra little tidbit. But anyhow, as far as Earl and Robin and his rest of his crew, I wanted to really give a shout out to those guys. They're really trying hard, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not commercial.
Sounds like it.
But it is.
Okay, saying no further public comments, bring it for discussion to the board.
If you want me to go first, I mean, I need to talk to you guys about what I, I visited three facilities this last week. I went to a brown course in Ocala. I went to a Trune course in Fort Myers and a Kemper course in Steril. And I'll just go over briefly what I, my main objectives were and talk to them about. And the first thing I talked to them was about our employees that we have now existing and what, what their companies, because I talked to general managers. I didn't talk to the people we're going to talk to today, but I wanted to feel from, from the general managers of what they think of how they do stuff. And, and I'm a little concerned about a lot of our employees, particularly all of them, and I wanted to see how they, how they did when they come in about wiping out our staff and so on and so forth. They were all pretty, pretty much said that they try to keep everybody that's possible. Now, I don't know what each company is or what our contract says, but the only thing that they did do is a couple of them narked on one of the other ones and said, they, they sometimes get rid of everybody, but I'm not even going to go into that because it's, that's us, our discussion with. But I was concerned about our employees and, and so that was my main thing. And they all said they will keep everybody that wants to stay. Because a lot of this is if, if we replace, I would assume they all have an option if they want to stay with the company they're with or not. So that was one of them. Another objective was the ownership. I didn't know, because it's tough with our ownership, how to relate to the staff. And two of the three have ownership right there on property. People own it. And they, they were happy about that because they don't deal with three or four people trying to get a direction, want to go in. They really liked that. The other one, I think it was at Trune, they have an organization that, and they are a bundle company, and I don't know if anybody's familiar with bundle companies, but they have a one fee for everything, and they work off that budget. So I thought it was, they were all very happy that they had to deal with one or two people, and that's all. Now, I don't know what we can ever do here with five different bosses in a sense and one general manager in between us. So that's something maybe we can ask at these meetings. But the food and beverage, Brown up there, they're, they're a Dell Web place and what they do is build golf courses and then sell them or manage, send them to management companies. After they built. After they built out, is that's what they call it, they got Club Core to manage their facility. Club Core couldn't turn the kitchen around and they were losing money. They were doing $430,000 gross, which is small compared to what we do here. Because I think Mike just said we're going to do 1.2 million or something like that. Is that it?
Not on golf, not on food and beverage.
What's our F and B? I forgot. 900,000, that's right. 900. That's right, 950.
That was membership.
But on their side, they started, they replaced Club Core and got Brown. Brown ended up buying the course. It's, it's owned by Brown now. And that's when they, they said it was very difficult to get the community of 1,320 homes, which is smaller than us, I think, with, with all the stuff there. You know, it's, it's just north of the villages. But they somehow talked to people, the residents, 1,320, and turned the kitchen around to pre-COVID to $950,000. So, they went from 430 to 950. Now, last year, they went from 950 to 700 and some thousand because it was a couple hundred thousand dollar hit on COVID. The other two are under construction. One of them, I mentioned earlier, was six and a half million dollar kitchen and clubhouse extension. That's at True. That's a bundled community. And Colonial had Kemper, and they have an owner that owns, and she's hands-on and lives right there. And they, they hired Kemper, but she has a general manager, and I talked to her quite a bit, and the pro. And they work very much together. It's, it's like a group, not so much structure here because she gives, she gives the management company how much she's willing to, to, to pay them for salaries and then gives them a budget and they work within that. They said it works very well. The, but the management company does not tell them how much we, she's got to spend, and that, that's good and bad. Probably pretty bad for the management company, but she, the owner controls it and it's like, the general manager said, it's like thumbs on, so. And, and that makes the working relationships work real well. True has the same thing with the, it's owned by the property owners and there's 1,500 homes there, but it's bundled. But they work very, very close to the ownership and, and doing what they prefer. And they, he said there's no problems. The workers, I was amazed that, two of these are country clubs, but when I went in and they introduced me to the head pro both times, or all three times, not much, not much going on in the clubhouse. Every head pro that I met was working with one non, you know, an assistant. So, they were working, and I don't know why that. I hope to ask the question why the head pro was working at the counter. But I don't, I don't know how that, I guess that might have something to do with the money they furnish them and they have to work within that budget. Or that, that's not a budget. That's a, it is a budget for the employees, what they have. But I walk outside and my God, the place was, like at Brown, I walked outside, there was one person in the, in the shop, and I walked outside and there was about 150 women tee-ing off, and they have four different nine-hole courses. Mike might understand that and they play two different courses and they switch in spots and probably their T-shirt has to be looked at quite hard, but, and there was Rangers and starters all over the place. I didn't see any employees. I, I got to play a few holes at Brown because it was quite a trip up there and I saw no, no, what do we call them, the Greek gators? I saw no gators running around. I did see two or, I think it was two times I saw a Ranger that come opposite to us and watching stuff. I did go, I did visit two of the maintenance facilities. Hardest, much nicer, bigger, and we must have a lot of equipment compared to everybody else because it was during the day and they couldn't even fit our gators that we have in their maintenance facility. But it seemed, the general manager was very happy with what he had, so I don't know. And just the equipment, but they have a lot less equipment.
The courses that you visited, were they 18-hole facilities or 36?
Well, 36. The Brown course in Ocala was 36. And it's, they have members, and they have open play. Their rate is for the winner, I just asked that, because it's kind of hard. The other ones were country clubs, so you kind of got to go different. But their rate, and they stay steady with it, is $42. And he says we're a little lower than what we want, but with that much competition. And, and so they're happy with $42 for an open round. But hopefully, we can expand on this when we talk to everybody. I don't have a recommendation. I just wanted to find out stuff that I could tell you guys about and you guys make your own decisions and ask your own questions, but it was 490 miles of traveling, but I'm, I'm really glad I did. It was, I learned a lot for not knowing much about golf stuff, but it was quite unique. So, that's all I have is I did, and you're good to ask your own questions, but I didn't meet with anybody that's going to come here. And as a matter of fact, they, two of them didn't even know who I was and why I was there, but they were just told to talk to me. So, they didn't, the companies didn't say, but, but they were all very nice to give me the time that they give me. So, it was very positive. That's all I have.
Okay. Any other board to board?
Yeah, I got something.
Okay.
So, it's come to my attention that one of the companies that we decided not to invite back, I guess contacted us and said, we don't, I guess we don't understand, we'd like to have a shot. I got to tell you personally, I mean, when we talked last meeting, I said we should talk to all six of them again because I think that's the right thing to do. But if a company takes the time to say, we'd like to have a shot, I'm not, we're not in agreement, we don't think you understood what our proposal was, I think you give them a shot. So, I'm putting it on the table. What do you guys think we would have did?
I, I personally think, I heard the same thing, but I think the staff knows what each one of us said. So, and I, and I said I was willing to talk to them. And I just assumed if, if three, three of us wanted to do that, that would happen, but I guess, I guess that's not really what happened.
I don't know. Staff, tell me what we'd do.
Okay. I would stick with what we said the last time, which was, let's try to cut it down because we're, we're spending a lot of time with each one of these proposals and I don't see that it was going to go anywhere. So, I would stick with the four that we've got, which is what we voted on the last time.
What was that?
He was agreeing with the four.
Okay.
Agreeing with the four. So, you want to do this and we don't want to do this?
I already told them that I was in favor of letting them come, so, but I, I strongly want to do what the majority of this board, whether I agree with or not, so.
Well, I had told them I was in favor of it also.
Yeah.
I did too.
So Craig's in favor of bringing them back?
I said that I would be willing to listen to them, even though I was one of the suggestions I didn't, wasn't that impressed with. But if they felt that strongly about us not understanding their proposal, I could, I could listen to them, but.
I mean, remember, this is 35 to 40% of our budget. This is a big decision.
I don't disagree with it being a big decision. I guess I'm frustrated that our board makes a decision and then we go back on it.
I agree.
And, and to, and to switch that around now when we've got four that are coming in today and Monday, and now we're talking about bringing back one of the other ones because they called us after we looked at their proposal and said, you know, if they're coming back to make a different proposal than they gave us, that's not acceptable to me if, you know, we asked them to give their proposal. And if it wasn't clear, that's a concern that, okay, if they think they can convince us of something that we didn't understand, then they weren't very good at communicating in the first place. So, I, you know.
I can go back to my original decision and that was to eliminate them.
Okay. So, we're still with three eliminating them and two wanting them back? Is that what I'm understanding? So, so we're still there?
Where are we? I'm sorry.
My, my understanding with what Craig just said is that he's joined Joe and I in saying that we're going to stick with the original position. So, there's three saying stick to the four and two saying we could invite the other guy back, which means we still stick to the four. I'm just clarifying with Craig that that's what he said.
Are you guys, I mean-
Well, I must say technically-
Are you worried about shaving face or are you worried about doing the right thing?
I'm worried about doing the right thing, and the right thing isn't wasting our time talking to somebody who-
Wasting your time based on, what have they told you that means they're wasting their ti, your time? They haven't said a word to you yet. Why do you, how can you guys possibly decide based on a handout?
That was their chance to tell us what they could do for us.
And they did no better or no worse than most of you.
Well, I don't agree. I thought it was obvious that there was two of them I didn't really need to talk to, and that's why I went with the way I did.
Well, just procedurally, if there was a vote taken that it was going to be four met with, if that's going to change, it has to be from the winning party or the winning side has to say, no, I'm, I want to change my decision. It doesn't sound like that's happened, so.
Well, there were four people who said go with the four, and now one of them seems to have changed. One of them was leaning towards changing, but I think they've changed back, and that's what I'm trying to put-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying is that the, the original, it sounds like there, there's no reason to overturn the original decision.
But that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I, I agree, and I, I mean it, I'll go with, but I got to, I got to understand the procedure. If, if it's what I heard was correct, somebody made a call to all five supervisors and asked what they would do after they heard the conversation. And if I'm hearing it right, there was four that said, yeah, we'll go ahead and talk to them. I don't know how it didn't get changed right then, but I, I don't sometimes understand all the legal parts of it, but how come it didn't change?
I made the decision to bring it back to the board. I made that decision. Omar talked to some of you and-
There's four of it. Four of us said that, Tanya.
Yeah, but I made the decision for y'all to talk about this from a board-to-board discussion.
Well, it worked, but I'll, I'll go with everybody, but how did four people say okay? And it not get changed?
Well, because, well, that's, because in my opinion, you know, it requires a vote because the previous vote was, we're going to listen to these four people. So, in order to overturn that vote, one of the four people that said, I don't know what the, the technical vote was, but the, there were at least three, possibly four supervisors that said, we're going to listen to only these four proposals. That is the, that's the version that passed. In order to overturn that, one of the four people that voted in favor of that has to say, I'm now moving that we reconsider it. It's a motion for reconsideration. And it doesn't sound like any of the four that are, that have, that previously said, we're going to listen to four people, have moved for a reconsideration. Now, that's, that's the procedure.
Yeah.
So, if somebody wants to make that motion and vote on it, then we can do that.
So, it's really what goes on at the meeting and not a phone conversation?
Correct. I mean, it's-
I'm just trying to understand the procedures and how it votes and how it can get-
All the supervisors, all of a sudden, one guy says, I'm open to it, one guy says he's not.
Excuse me. Excuse me. If what you're telling me and what Mike just said, if I'm hearing you correctly, then there was conversation going on between supervisors and someone that was shared with other supervisors, and that's a violation of the sunshine law.
No, we got, I got, I got a call from an employee.
I, Omar and I are the only two that talk to each of you individually.
I think the question was as to whether or not to bring this up during this period of the meeting.
Okay. But what I'm, what I'm hearing is that there are at least two supervisors who seem to have understand, stood that four supervisors said, we'll hear this. How would they get that information?
They were told that.
They were just told that.
I just told it. I was called by an employee out of Sun 'n' Lake.
He said yes. I said yes. He said yes.
And they were asked individually.
Okay. But I understand you were asked individually, but we're not supposed to get feedback on what other supervisors say on items that are not coming before the board.
That's what happened right now. I think that's, if I'm understanding it right, that's what's happened right now.
I had one conversation with him. He asked me the question, I gave my opinion. That was it.
And that's what I did. I had no other conversation.
Okay. And they didn't tell you what other supervisors said?
Oh, no. No. No.
So, I'm, my point is procedurally, if anybody is interested, I mean, I think we have a consensus, but if there's anybody actually interested in making the motion, that's the procedure. Someone that originally voted yes, we're only going to listen to four, has to now make a motion to say, no, I want that reconsidered. And so, that's where we're at now.
I guess, I guess my only confusion is that we can do whatever we both want is, a couple of days ago, they were, apparently four guys just said I'd be open to it. And here we are on Friday, and now they're not.
Well, I think that after, I guess my understanding is what it just looked like happened is there was a discussion and it doesn't look like anybody wants to put forth that motion. So, I'm just telling you procedurally.
It, it wouldn't have been brought up if we weren't called and asked. That's all, and I don't care. I just want to do things. If four of, if four people want, and the same way when we talked to Tanya and what we've individually, we want done here, I hope that she does what four people want instead of making her own decision.
Well, that's, yeah, yeah, let me correct there.
I felt it needed to be talked about at the board level. That's what I felt after, after those discussions.
I just, I just don't know nothing, but I'm saying if I got a call from Tanya and she asked me an opinion, or I met with her and I told her, and six months later, I find out that there was four of us that wanted that and we never had the opportunity.
That's what I'm making sure of right now, is the procedure is that what Tanya was doing was informational. This new information has come in, I'm notifying the board, each of the board members of this new information, so that you guys have that information and that the four of you that originally voted, no, we're only going to listen to four people, now have the information that this fifth person wants consideration. Once you get that information, it's your job as a supervisor to say, okay, I'm the one that voted for it, so now I want that reconsidered. And so, that's, we don't, I don't want you to think is that the, the individual information that you give to Tanya creates any sort of decision-making. All that did was bring it up as, we want to make sure you have this information so you can be prepared at the board meeting to move for reconsideration if that's what you want to do.
Okay. So, that's what really happens when the five of us meet with Tanya, and she's the only one that knows how five of us feel.
Correct.
And that's where I have the problem half the time. I, I don't want to pick on Tanya, but it could be anybody else, but she should know right away that four of her bosses want this. And, and that's all I want to make sure-
And I understand that, but here's what I want you to-
She got to make that decision. We are.
This is the, this is what I want you to understand, is just because Tanya knows that doesn't relieve the board from the procedure of going through this process. We, we can't have what everybody likes to call backroom deals. We don't want these backroom deals happening.
It sounds to me like there was one. I mean, I mean-
No, there wasn't. Instead of a backroom deal, it was brought back to the board for discussion.
Exactly. Because of those discussions, we are having this discussion now at this open meeting.
So, we have to have it at a meeting is what you're telling me. We can't.
That's correct.
And so, even if Tanya knows what the rest of us want, it might not happen.
Not unless it gets voted on at a meeting.
Okay. That's, and see, that's what's probably unfair about this whole system that we have to operate under, because she works, she works for us.
Before we get this many people.
We, we can reset, we can recess till 1:15. I can email Brown right now and tell him we will be ready at 1:15 or 1:30. Is there a preference?
1:30. And I don't like that. I think that shows us being unprofessional, not prepared to meet with them.
1 o'clock, because why don't some people come?
Yeah, we got people coming.
I'm just offering.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, I just think that shows...
Yeah, I think we should try to stick with the 1 o'clock.
Sir. I'm sorry.
I think we should try to stick with the 1 o'clock and just take a quick half-hour break, and everybody go get something to eat and be back.
I do.
Can we do that?
We, so I guess we...
There would have been a motion, so.
Well, I want to know, so I can't say.
Correct.
Right now, there are, as my understanding is, there are still four people who say...
Yes. Can I mind that? I wonder...
Just the four.
I'm fine.
So no change.
I want to know the system.
The system, it comes back to the board if we need to have further discussion.
I want to know what happened between two days ago and today. That's what I'd like to know.
Nothing happened because nothing can happen outside of the board meeting.
Is Faric...
The last thing I would like to add before I adjourn to the discussion is, where do we stand with the new sound system? Because we're still with the old sound system.
It's got a PO entered in the system, so it should be being ordered by the vendor now that PO has been approved and processed.
Do we have a timeline yet?
No, not yet. I'm waiting on that.
Okay. Saying no further discussion from the board, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you. See you at 1 o'clock.